Good afternoon. We have been in the room roughly for the whole session, the public school of Robstown. Afternoon everyone, welcome to the whole session, the public school of Robstown. Before we get ready to start, I have three words of prayer.
Let us pause for a moment of silence for depth that's in our system, from administration all the way to our students. Amen. Our wise creator, the author and finisher of our faith, we gathered together this afternoon to conduct business concerning the public schools of Robinson Town County. Continue to allow us to be one team with one goal in mind, and that goal is the best interest of the students and staff of the public schools of Robinson County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you everybody who's got their book.
The other one, the red one, I'm good now, okay.
Sure. I just want to say thank you to all of you, it's Friday afternoon, for your presence, and we do have a lot of information that we just need to share with you. I would indicate during this meeting that we will move some of it over to Action for Tuesday night. But thank you for your commitment to the public schools of Robinson County and on Friday night to be present, that means a lot, thank you.
Thank you. It looks like the, we'll start off with Erica Sess with the finance updates with the 2021 audit.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, board members and everyone else present. I'd like to introduce Mr. Lee Grissom, who's going to be going over our 2021 audit, but before he comes up, I did want to preface with a few things. You know, our audit, what's submitted to the LGC requires approval, we are still waiting on that approval. We received an update later this afternoon that there are some additional things we'll have to submit for the audit. I don't want to steal anything from his presentation, but one of the most important things that I gathered from it is we have a clean audit with no findings. Now, there may be an issue with the timing of the audit that will be brought up by LGC. If there is a finding there, we will bring that forward to the board, but he has some really positive information to share on our fund balances and everything else from the audit for this year. So I'm going to ask Mr. Grissom to come forward, and if he can introduce his team, and we'll kind of tag team for his presentation. There should be some handouts at your desk that go over what he's going to discuss and some graphics that show how our fund balance has changed over the last few years.
That's okay, all right, good afternoon, everyone. Beautiful day, thanks for having us here. Again, my name is Lee Grissom, and I brought Daniel Leonard and Meredith Godwin, I tried to get them to stand beside me, they don't want to do it. But they were instrumental with the audit this year, as well as Hugh and Erica did a great job. This audit process, it's, I don't know many people that like going to the dentist, but it's like that, I don't like to go to the dentist, but that's what an audit feels like. And they kind of put up with us for 10 or 11 months this year. As Erica mentioned, the audit was late, we issued it March 31st, so just about 10 days ago. Typically, that's a red flag, we did not include that as a finding on our end, because as you know, everybody blames COVID. And actually, it was a legitimate excuse, we didn't just blame COVID, but we had a couple of these guys behind me had COVID, I won't say which one. And then there's some staff on their end that, and I think they lost their taste in all that terrible stuff. And I think this is the first time you've seen my face, so I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing. Yes, 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 but I've been shaved for tonight. But anyway, COVID, we blamed COVID, and there was some AP vendor stuff, I don't know if you want to touch on that real quick.
So we use, sorry, I'm short, we use a vendor called VIT that scans in our data, and they had issues with COVID, they had several staff that retired. So part of the process was they come and get our files, and they had them on hand, and we were waiting for that information to get to the auditor. So a lot of that, the combination of those things resulted in where we are now.
Yeah, so again, we issued the report March 31st, 2022, I would have said a good target would have been the end of December, so we were three months behind that. But as you'll see in a few moments, the audit was solid, we had no findings, and you'll see the, when we go over the graphs, it's some of the best financial information in the last five years. So that's definitely credit to leadership here. Let me just say what the two standards that we audit the school board, the first one is generally accepted auditing standards for the United States. That's the traditional financial statement audit, so if you have copies of the report, which we're not going to go over, it's 90 pages, it's a pretty tedious process to put that together. Those auditing standards, what we basically do is give our opinion that you can rely on the financial information. So it's good check from Erica and the staff who provide us with the numbers, we go through, we look at historical information, because we can go way back, we look for anomalies. We test balances, so you can rely on that financial information. We issued an unmodified, clean opinion for the financial statements, so in other words, in our opinion, you can rely on these financial statements, so that's a good thing. The second thing, because of all the state and federal expenditures, grant expenditures, the state expenditures for fiscal year ended June 30th, '21 was 163 million. So a lot of money there coming in, and then 61 million of federal grant expenditure, so that brings a lot of compliance requirements. So what we have to do, we have governmental auditing standards, it's a much higher standard than the financial statement audit standard. We have to do a lot more training, the independence requirement's higher, and we have to actually give an opinion on internal control. So this might be more information, but if we just say there's no government money going through, and we just do a traditional audit, the internal controls can really be light, depending on what our risk assessments are. But for you guys, we really have to deep dive into internal controls and assess internal controls and give our opinion. Regarding internal controls, we did not find any findings in our testing, and we had to go through all that federal and state money. And Daniel definitely gets a lot of credit, and Erica and Hugh and the rest of the staff pulled lots, several checks, went through all internal controls, found no issues really. So we had four auditor opinions and no findings for any of them. So this one handout here, if you got this, the report to the Board of Education. I'm going to summarize this material, we're required to provide this information, the last page is a summary of the auditor results. So you can see the unmodified, clean opinion on that last page, financial statements, federal awards and state awards, so there were no findings this year. So I summarized that in the last page, and interrupt me if you have any questions, so I got a lot, I'm trying to run through this for you guys, I know you're busy tonight. Yeah.
I did want to mention that the entire audit is a part of your notebook that you receive, if you want to go further into the details, the whole document's included.
Okay, to summarize what's in this letter, this is the required communication letter. The first thing, we maintained independence throughout the audit, we cannot audit if we're not independent, so we had no issues with independence. Management provided full access to records, there were no significant changes in accounting policies. We found, there were a few cleanup journal entries on the balance sheet that we kind of helped out with, but there was nothing material to report there. We had no disagreements with management, there were no illegal acts that we found, and we did not consult with other auditors. The last piece, I think it's important to understand, if you look at the financial statements, we use estimates, and management uses estimates in the financial statements. What that means is there are certain judgment calls that would significantly change the balance sheet or income statement depending on what, you know, which way you go. So a prime example would be depreciation expense, you set up a new asset, say it's millions of dollars, if you depreciate it over 15 years or 20 years, and making those kind of calls, that can swing your balance sheet as far as fixed assets or depreciation expense. So we're required to let you know that. Another one would be allowance for doubtful accounts, so that's basically your net collection receivables. Another really, really big one is your pension liabilities, I don't know what they, what were they on June 30th, probably 20 million something, that one's a really large estimate. Yeah, go ahead.
So our pension liability would be what, if we had to pay out everyone's retirement as of June 30th, so that's what that number is, that has to be recorded in our financials, even though that's not an actual expense.
But even that number is, which is, I don't have it in front of me, it's maybe 30 million, 40 million, that's an estimate too. So if that number changed, that would significantly change the balance sheet. So those are the requirements, things I'm supposed to disclose, a couple of notes on internal controls. Historically, when we've done this, we've done this audit, or a different partner, Buddy McLean used to do this audit, he was involved in it since the 70s. And I know I've talked to Erica, and she's filled me in recently, the business office has always been good at doing with, working with less. So, you know, a terrific job, I guess the only recommendation, she would be happy if you hired one more person to help you out, because she's being audited constantly. So, you know, that might speed up the audit process, I think she wanted me to say that too. But that would be, you know, but overall, I would say, you know, I do 25 to 30 audits, government audits a year, and she's definitely top notch, I think you're lucky to have her. If she disappears, maybe we would disappear, we wouldn't want to do it. And another thing, Hugh did a terrific job, and we went through his internal control process at the schools. He took Daniel along on one of the trips to one of the schools, we looked at his reports, how he was selecting schools, and we thought that, I think Hugh scares everybody, is what, he scares me a little bit. I think he's doing a good job there, I think that's a great internal control that we, he doesn't scare me, I'm not scared of you. But, and then the last thing, you know, Daniel, and I mean, Daniel and Erica did a terrific job, you'll see the financial statements is 90 pages, it's not an easy task to put those together. That was extremely time consuming, I think Daniel has a few extra gray hairs, even at his younger age, but they did a terrific job putting those reports together. So again, we had other, the one issue, and you mentioned the LGC may point that out, or it may be a finding, after all, the audit was late, and if they force us, we may have to make that a finding, which I already mentioned, the COVID. And again, if the audit's late, for those of you who are on other boards, or if you're, if you show up in a different year and I'm not here, whatever, a late audit is a red flag in general, though. So you should always be, you know, if you notice an audit late, you need to ask why that is. Are there any questions?
Anybody got any questions? How do you manage them?
For anyone who balances their own bank statement personal, it is so difficult for us, but this is a mammoth process, as you heard him say. I want to commend our financial department, if you look back at the years, how, what a situation we were in, and if you look back also at audits in the past, I, we can't give anybody a raise, because we have to give everybody a raise. But I want to commend our financial department and our leadership for getting us out of that mess and making us solve it. I'm very proud of our department and part of the auditors for showing that they are doing well, so thank you for that job.
Okay, before we get to the graphs, obviously with COVID, there was a lot of federal and state money, so if you're looking at this fiscal year and comparing to the past, what I noted, total revenues were what I noted, total revenues were up 22.9 million dollars and a lot of that's that that federal state money coming through. So that was a big story. That's really a lot of the entities across the board in North Carolina that we look at. So just a common story. Overall, net position increased by 10.4 million dollars. So the numbers were very favorable from that standpoint. So let's go ahead and jump to the graphs. I picked Carolina blue. I figured there's Carolina fans here on that first page. I may not be one, but you know, it's I tried to pick good colors here. All right, the first one, this is your general fund. So it's your local money. This is fund balance at June 30th. So we have the last five fiscal years. And what you'll see in in most of these graphs, or seven of them, 2021 is going to be the best, the best year. So and for the general fund fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021, you had a 3.7 million dollar increase from last year. So you have, you're at 8.1 million dollars in 2021. So you can see that's a significant jump from 2019, 1920, and then now 21, you see it going up. So I think that's terrific. Let's go to the next page. Again, general fund, this is fund balance available by percentage. Now you, this is four fiscal years. Now the green line is your target. So the, so the blue, anything above the green is doing better than the target number of 16%. And you can see the minimum requirement down there. 16% is about two months in reserve of general fund expenditures. So I mean, really, the, as an audit firm, you like to see a better emergency fund. So the higher that is, it means you just for, it's rainy day money is what this is representing. So you can see the the blue, the green, again, the green is the the minimum requirement. And then you see 2021, you know, jump up significantly. At 2021, you're at about 4.5 months in reserve. And that's after last year was about, you're at two months reserve. So you've almost added two and a half months of reserve. And again, this is, this is June 30th, 21. So I don't know where you are now. So this is past information, but as far as, you know, what we're reporting. So it's it's, it's very, very strong, you know, relative to the last three fiscal years. Let's go to the next, next page. You get, you get to speak on this one. Good. This is a capital outlay fund. And and you can see the last five fiscal years, 2020 was at 17.5 million. And there was a a decrease of 4.4 million dollars this year. So you're at 13 million in 2021. And Erica can take, take this one.
So we just wanted to discuss why we see that decrease there and it's really two things. When Hurricane Florence occurred, DPI gave us a loan, so to speak. So the process was much faster than it was with Hurricane Matthew. So they fronted us money, allowed us to make emergency repairs. Then once we filed all of our insurance and FEMA costs, whatever was left, we had to pay back to DPI. So that represents a payment back to DPI of 2.6 Hugh, or you, 2.8, thank you. 2.8 million dollars. And we have all the details on that, but we had to give the money back because you can't get reimbursed twice. We ended up getting reimbursed because we were better, in a better financial position because we had flood insurance. And FEMA paid for our deductibles. So we can't get that twice. So that was part of it. And then as we move forward to Red Springs project, that was all part of fund balance. So that's why you see that slight decrease there.
Okay, let's go to page four. This is the Scoot School Food Service Fund. Now I adjusted the net position here. I mentioned the pension liabilities. We kind of look at that pension because if it's an estimate, we think it's sort of a distraction. So I factored that out of here. So this is the net position at June 30th for the last five fiscal years in the school's food service fund. As you can see, 2021, there was an increase from the prior fiscal year of 3.9 million dollars. So you're you're much higher than the previous four fiscal years, sitting at 7.2 million dollars in net position.
I just wanted to mention that's contributed directly to the waivers that were in place, the COVID waivers that allowed for child nutrition to operate the entire year on a summer program. So there were flexibilities given to child nutrition to allow them to serve more children without having to, you know, get the lunch numbers from kids and accept cash. Remember, everybody's free. We're on CEP and some of those other flexibilities. So that's why we were able to see that big increase there.
Okay, let's go to the next one, page five. And this, and this is school food service again. And I just showed the the cash balance on this one. So it it pretty much mirrors the previous page. You can see the the cash at 7.8 million dollars, significantly higher than the previous four fiscal years. All right, let's go to page six. And this one is combined cash all funds for the last five fiscal years. And as you can see, June 30th, 2021, you're at the the highest in the last five fiscal years at 33 million. That's a 2.5 million dollar increase from the previous fiscal year. If you look at 2019, where you were, your cash is close to double, close to double compared to 2019. So from an audit standpoint, we like to see reserve, like to see cash. So we think that's very favorable as well. Let's go to page seven. This is the last graph. This is your governmental funds analysis of fund balance at June 30th, last five fiscal years. This governmental funds, that's essentially the capital outlay fund and the general fund combined. Because because of the capital outlay, which we looked at a minute ago, had gone down, decreased by about 4 million dollars. Between the general fund and the capital outlay, there's a slight decrease in your total governmental funds. I think, I think it's, the decrease was 529,000. But still, it's the second highest fund balance in your governmental funds in the last five years. So still, still looking good there. Are there any questions, comments?
If I have any questions, comments?
And on the, you've mentioned that you were running a little late on the audit. When we are looking at from year to year, are we, are we comparing month, month for month for each year? In other words, is it 10 months? Is it 12 months? Or by us being late, I know you said we had to back it up to March, June?
Right. So typically, it is, we look at all 12 months. So typically, the LGC likes for you to have your audit done by October the 31st, or they give an extension automatically through December the 31st. So it was late by three months from the December deadline.
So these numbers reflect those three months or does not?
No, sir. All of this information reflects June 30th of 2021.
Any other questions, comments?
Chair, make a comment, please. First, thank you to our auditors for a job well done. And then again, to echo Dr. Manuel's, congratulations to Erica and Hugh and the entire team. Want to awesome job. When you think back to where you were financially, I think 2019, and you see where you're at now, overall, an increase in balances of around 1.5, 2 million dollars. That is incredible work in tough times. And so again, congratulations to you and your team.
That wraps up our part and thank you guys and thank you for coming, guys. So we're ready to leave and enjoy the Friday. Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Erica, the question was asked, do we need to take a vote on this? You and I have talked about that and the policy says what?
The policy says that our auditors should make a presentation in an open session to the board, which they have done. It does not require any action on the board and, but we can bring it back for action once it's finally approved from LGC. Just so that's covered. But that's why we're not asking it this time because we're waiting for that final version. But the policy only requires a presentation, which we've done. And I want to say thank you to everybody in finance too. I mean, it takes a lot of people to get to this point. It takes, everything comes through finance at some point. So I want to say thank you to everybody as well.
It'd be better if you had just one more person with you.
I thought that was a message.
Yeah. Craig?
Seven years ago, Mr. Hugh was a frightening person coming on campus. I can verify that. When he come on campus and you knew what he was there for, he knows what I'm talking about. The auditor's here and everybody that's dealing with the monies running around, Mr. Hugh is here. And you know that, Mr. Dr. Rob, y'all know what I'm talking about. He just had a way when he come on campus of, I don't know if it was the fear or what, but the books were right and he helped make sure that they were right and then what what y'all do down here. But thank you for everything y'all do.
Do you have a comment, Dr. Freeman? I thought so you handed.
She was just agreeing.
They were saying they knew what it's like for Hugh to come as principals.
All right. So we'll move on then. Next item is the she still got it. Erica's got it. Okay.
Yes. The next item is the 21, 22 budget and budget resolution and all of that was included in your packet as well. Were you going to say something, Mr. Smith? I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
Okay. So you know, we had a late budget from the state this year. So once we paid out all the bonuses in January, once we updated all the pay scales and did the retro payments in February, now we have a more complete picture of what our budget looks like. And you'll see that information contained here. I can answer any questions. It's a large document as well. It's like 62 pages. The first three pages you see there for the resolution summarize everything in that 62 page document by purpose function. And that's when the audit team comes in, what they look at to judge whether we've overspent in any line items. Everything gets summarized in those purpose functions. And as they've indicated, we have even more funding this year. So when they come back for the audit next year, we'll see even a bigger increase, especially in federal dollars.
Dr. Manuel?
Mr. Chair, I don't know when we do the proposed budget. But there's several board members that visited the expo the other week. And we want to put in a bid to add 15,000 to the budget for Career Center for uniforms. Whenever the budget comes up, I know we give money to Career Center, but we want to do an additional 15,000 for them to get uniforms, not uniforms, but just shirts for the Career Center. But I don't know when that comes about, when like with the 31 monies or the 69 monies, that we could add additional 15,000 to theirs for them to get. I don't know when that comes, Erica.
So this is a working document. Once we submit this tonight, any changes that the board wants to implement will come forward as an amendment at any new meeting. So is that something for this school year or for next school year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But I don't know. I mean, just to put it there, I wouldn't suspect they would get new uniforms this year, Erica. I would suspect next year. Mr. Brewer, what, may I ask Mr. Brewer a question? He was in on that too as well, Mr. Gray. Mr. Chair, may I respond to Mr. Brewer?
Sure.
Mr. Brewer, when do you think it was next year? They were talking about, you wouldn't think it'd be this year, do you?
I thought, I think they were asking that we try to work it in our budget. So that when we start back the next fiscal year in August, that they would have those monies to go ahead and plan and put that in place.
Okay. Uh, Career Center, uniforms for the the children that are there, not the uniforms, but the shirts, not the whole uniform. They want shirts with the Career Center, like for the welders, carpenters, any of those.
Identified their trade.
Yeah, they're identifying the trade.
And have, what's the logic behind that?
The logic is that they're unified in their trade. In other words, when they go do demonstrations and all.
Yeah.
It's just like any other unified group of children, a unified group of people.
Yeah.
You know, to advertise, it's a good marketing thing as well and it builds confidence in the children. If you went to the expo last week and you saw those children in the pride, they were taking in what they were doing. And even one child said, you know, he brought the subject up, we should like to have uniforms. Ma'am, are you on the board? I said, well, I'm one person, but I can certainly talk. That's the only gift I have is talking. But
It makes a positive impression. Also, it increases morale for the team.
Yes, absolutely. We'll budget that either our CTE funds or, not a fund source, but that is not a problem.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, CTE funds has a restriction. They won't let you buy uniforms.
All right, we can do it.
I was going to tell him that later.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to help you out.
Now, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Manuel brought it up. I can't really read all this because of my eyes. However, the band teachers did mention to us, is it included in here or we used to rotate giving the band uniforms?
Yes, that's in the capital outlay budget. That is $125,000 remains every year in the budget for band uniforms on rotation schedule through Ms. Carter.
Greg?
I wasn't there when they talked about this part. But what they did with the CTE program last week at Farmer's Market, folks, if you get a chance and get to go to the Career Center before this school year is out and see what's going on in those programs down there, it's it's fantastic. And they had everything set up at the Farmer's Market. It wasn't just one or two people there. They had whole groups of kids showing what was being done at at the facility down there. And it's kind of unbelievable. I knew some of the stuff, but I didn't know all of it. But again, we talked about that. That's one of the best hidden secrets we have in this county about people not knowing the availability down there. And what they were trying to do too, and we, this kind of leads to something else, is getting the eighth grade students, they were bringing in all our eighth grade students to show them what's down there. And then we need to turn around and really encourage our high school principals to get these kids registered for these classes and show them that they are available. But the shirts, it would be another way that we could, you know, advertise the program and give some morale boosting and everything. But if you get a chance between now and the end of the school year to go to the Career Center and just see what's going on down there, I think you will be very pleasantly surprised.
Your teacher at the Career Center?
Yeah.
And our architectures that came out from that program are really doing really good. You know, there's, there are some of my realtors now, some of them even drafted for major companies. They make good money when they come out.
Did you say something?
Yeah. Oh, I'd like to speak on what Mr. Craig, they were speaking about. They are, it's amazing to me that we are far more advanced today than we were two, three, four years ago. The students was talking about 3D projects to me. They were talking about like if they fabricated a piece of equipment, they could change the composition and tell you the strength of that, of that item they were building, what, how much impact it could take.
Yeah.
That was impressive.
Yeah.
That's very impressive. That's what it's going to take, I think, Dr. Williamson, for us to move forward. But there is a concern, it was brought, brought to Dr. Manuel's attention and mine, is that this year, we've got one student, only one student CTE program that's going to graduate on an engineering level. That we need to increase. We need to bring that up, especially if we're going to build, spend the monies we're talking about spending in a new school.
Okay. All right. We'll move on, Eric.
Okay. So the next topic is a PRC 071 supplemental funds. And I just want to go over a few of those details. First, I want to clearly state that this, these funds were granted to us from DPI and the guidance surrounding how they are to be dispersed was approved by the State Board of Education. The State Board in conjunction with DPI created the schedule you see in this packet that shows all the districts in the state and the maximum amount that they can pay their teachers. That's important because there are districts around us that are going to be paying a different amount than we are. But this comes from the state and it tells us the max that we're allowed to pay each employee. The lowest max was in Union County and there's this $436. And the highest max was shared by several counties and it's $4,250. Our max is $1,490. So what that means is we cannot pay any teacher or certified instructional support higher than that total. The rules are all included here. I even included the the guidance that DPI submitted as well as the State Board of Education formula information that's in the manual. It may only be used to provide supplements to certified teachers and certified instructional support personnel. That includes nurses, social workers, guidance counselors. That includes nurses, social workers, guidance counselors, media coordinators, who are working and coded to a school. That's important. It cannot include central office or district personnel. It has to be those employees that are out at a school. Principals and assistant principals are not eligible because we don't have any of those that are being held harmless on that general statute. Pre-K teachers are also excluded from this, but we discussed including them in another funding source because of the fairness associated with paying all the other teachers and excluding pre-K. Pre-K is excluded because pre-K is not funded by the state. These funds come directly from the state from their ESAR funding and they only fund K-12 education. So we will use another funding source to include pre-K teachers. No classified employees are eligible for this particular bonus. It is only certified employees. I'm sure that's going to be a question that I get a lot of. So it's only certified staff.
Okay.
And the, the board, the local school boards can decide when it is paid and all the eligibility requirements around it. So we're suggesting that all of those groups I mentioned who are in pay status as of April the first, they will get this payment, full amount. It's not going to be prorated for anyone on June the 10th, when we pay our traditional teacher supplement. So that's our recommendation today. And I also want to make it clear that this amount, the $1,490, can change from year to year. It may not always be the same amount. The funding formula they use is a couple pages long and it's included in this information as well. So I just wanted to make all those things clear and, and bring forward our recommendation and take any questions anyone has.
Dr. Williams? Erica, you may have said this, um, had to be employed by what?
April 1st.
April 1st. That's the cutoff. Okay. Sounds good to me.
It is unlike some of the other bonuses that the teachers receive. It will be subject to FICA and retirement. I always get that question. Some of the state bonuses that were paid in January were not subject to retirement, but this will be. So employees will have to pay their 7.65 FICA and their 6% retirement. And the district will have to pay the matching 24.10% retirement.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
If you will repeat, who approved this this way? Because I'm sure that's going to be getting out boxes and everything.
Right. This was approved by the State Board of Education. The language surrounding who is eligible was approved by the State Board of Education. And the funding was given to us by the Department of Public Instruction. But all of these guidelines were developed at the state level. And they clearly state that the local board of education is responsible for determining the distribution of the supplement within the confines of the legislation. So you can decide whether it's prorated, when it gets paid and who's eligible. But we cannot go past that $1,490. And all of those minimum and maximum amounts were calculated by the Department of Public Instruction and not by the public schools.
Mike. Randy?
Does this go to an action item?
We do have this on an action item for Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
Any other comments, questions? Craig?
I'm sorry, Erica, this, what, roughly $1,400?
$1,490, $1,490.
Just for clarification, now, the supplemental or the bonus that we was given in December, that people got 500 and they were getting another 500 in June.
That's correct.
That's totally separate.
That is separate from this.
Okay.
Yes.
And that was all of our employees.
That's correct.
So that was another 500 they'd be eligible for in the.
In June. Yes, sir. And there's also another bonus that has been approved by this board with state funding. It was a grant for child nutrition employees that'll be paid and that's separate from this as well. And only includes, that one only includes child nutrition employees.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is capital projects, Eric.
We just wanted to include a sheet back, I believe in September. We included at a finance committee meeting, some of the ongoing roofing and other projects. It's not everything that's going on, but it's a good summary of what has been completed this year. And we just wanted to include that for an update and that's, you'll find that right after the PRC 071 in there to just show that I'm saying 98% of those projects have been approved. And the only thing from this list not finished yet is the Prospect and South Robinson roof projects, but they are in process. And that was just for information. That'll be the last sheet that you find in the financial update section.
Because they have a total dollar amount, Erica.
It does.
What is that?
$2.8 million.
2.8?
Yes, sir.
And we're at like 90%, you said?
We're at like 98%. There's only 105, a little over 105,000 outstanding of that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's encouraging. Making steady progress, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
Any comments, questions? All right, we'll move to the next. Student reassignment, Dr. Freddie Williamson.
I'm sorry, we added FEMA updates because we actually, Hugh and myself and Dr. Williamson had a conference call today.
Okay, FEMA update.
And I'm gonna let Hugh go over some of those details from the call today.
Good evening. So yes, me, Dr. Williamson, and Erica Sessler, Ms. Sessler, met with Ms. Danielle Amon with Baker Donaldson, the law firm that y'all approved to help us file the appeal with FEMA. This past Tuesday marked 180 days since that appeal had been filed. As of this morning, FEMA, per the North Line Mercy Management, when they checked the inbox, whatever that may be, FEMA has noted that they have received the appeal and that is the only comment for that appeal since. So they have not touched it. But the 180 deadline, day deadline, is the little magic number where we can withdraw the appeal and file for arbitration. Now, by doing this, we speed up the process.
What's the attorney saying, Hugh?
This, this is kind of the end goal, what we had in mind from the get-go. We knew this appeal process, it could drag, we don't have to do anything. This could drag on for another five years. They may not look at it, they may look at it. The attorneys, uh, it is all in our court. They seem to think, we seem to think arbitration is the best route to go to get this thing handled, done, and moved on. When we file this motion for the appeal, I mean, for the arbitration, the panel of judges, I believe it's called a CBCA, please don't ask me what that stands for. But they will have 14 days to respond and we have 14 days to meet with them at a pre-trial meeting. At that date, 60 days from that date will be, will be the trial.
What was, uh, I know we got our attorney here. I know we paying a lot of money for outside attorneys, but in the arbitration part of it, what kind of fee do you think that we, we, would we try to generate?
It'd be more, correct me if I'm wrong, but it'd be more like a negotiation type deal. Because FEMA has not responded, this has kind of pushed them, they have to respond at some point within 30 days of that appeal. And they could come up and say, okay, we know we haven't done anything, but this is what we're willing to offer. And we could accept it or continue on for the court case.
Dr. Williams? Uh, correct me now, and the offer from FEMA was 5 million?
4.6.
4.6 million. And our application was for how much?
87.
Okay.
And that 87 figure came from the architects that we had, the board had hired due to FEMA's direction of get these figures to us so we can move forward. We did. They don't want to pay.
So Mike, what, what the arbitration process does is put it in a third party's hands. It's going to be the final arbiter on what kind of money we're going to get. They'll put their position forward, we'll put our position forward. And that third-party arbiter, or that panel actually, will make that ultimate decision as to how much money we'll get out of our appeal.
Correct.
We got nothing to lose. I mean, and, and truthfully, this is probably where they were trying to push it to all along.
Right.
Yeah.
It's basically been five and a half years today since Hurricane Matthew, four and a half since we had turned all the paperwork into them. Then whenever that motion is filed, we'll have an answer roughly. Well, they said 120 days out because that panel of judges has 60 days from the date of the court case to make a decision. But roughly, you're saying within 100 days from the time you filed a motion, you'll have an answer.
You have a question, Craig?
Yes, sir. If I'm understanding, if we don't do nothing, FEMA could just let this thing sit and see it for six months, one year. They don't have to do anything. The only way to force their hands to do something is for us to go this route with the arbitration. Okay. And then again, as you said, we put in what we're saying, we should get the 87 million. They're going to say, well, we're going to offer you 4.6 and that arbitrator is going to come up and say, this is it. And when they make that, that's it. That's the final judgment.
Well, so, so there's probably another, and I don't know, I missed a call this morning. I don't know what was said, but there's always, uh, you know, once you get in arbitration, it's about like getting in a trial. Everybody's going to present their, you know, put their best foot forward. And if, you know, they may have reasons then to come to the table before the arbiter makes a decision and say, this is what we'll do. You know, and short-circuit it and put a number on the table that we're comfortable walking away with. Because, you know, an arbiter's like a trial. When that final decision comes, that's what you got.
And they did mention that, Mr. Craig, Ms. Danielle, and they were very adamant not to call it a settlement. They said FEMA does not like the term settlement, but they did say that once, so FEMA's going to have to state a position, we're going to have to state a position. Once they hear that, they could come with an offer before we get to all those points. And then we kind of take that as we go. But if, you know, we're not happy with that offer, we still move forward with the process to be in front of the judges. But they said that that moves very quickly. The judges don't care about if somebody can't be there. They said they even told somebody, they had a, they were going on their honeymoon with FEMA, FEMA representative. And they said, well, give it to somebody else. So they're very, they want everything to be done in a timely manner. And they said they like to keep their dockets open, so they don't keep anything longer than 60 days.
Mr. Chairman?
Randy?
Dr. Williamson, do we need to vote on this tonight to move forward?
No, we're going to move it to an action item for Tuesday night.
Okay.
Right. But I do, I do want to ask this question, something for the board to be processing. So the application was $87 million. They offered 4.8. And so what do we think is the bottom line dollar amount that's susceptible to us? Uh, we had that conversation today and, and just as, as a figure, we landed on $50 million. Now, that may or may not be. So we need the board to be processing. And Grady, you may think different. But I think we do.
Let's be careful that somebody from FEMA may be listening right now and know that we're talking about $50 million. So let's not play our hand. We can always play our hand once we know where they're at. So let's keep our cards a little closer to our chest.
And that's what they.
We don't have to take whatever the offer, whatever, I know you said not use the word seven. But when they, when it goes to arbitration, they come back and they say, throw out the number. We, we don't have to take it though. We're not, we can say we're not receptive. Then we just go back to the attorneys, right? They still.
Right. And then we will move forward with the panel before the judges. But once those judges make a determination, I'm assuming that's final then, once it goes before those, that panel. And they did say that the region we're in, Region 4, is one of the worst regions for activity. Region 2 has a lot of activity going on right now as far as the court system. But they said that our region, and I don't know how many states that includes, but, um, that they've seen that as the worst for FEMA actively participating and moving forward cases.
Yeah, Region 4 reaches from Virginia all the way down to Texas. And if I'm not mistaken, when we started this process, they did mention when and if it does go to arbitration, that the applicant success rate is 90%.
Randy?
And Mr. Grady, I agree with you because on, on the other fact, we waited for four and a half years. But there's some collection there too.
But just so you know, once we file arbitration, any out-of-pocket expense is not reimbursable back by FEMA.
Okay. You said we'll act on it Tuesday? Yes. Okay.
Mike?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members, you have in your package, student reassignment, that's policy code 4150. I would just state, that policy says that the superintendent can make recommendations for the most effective use of school facilities. So our discussion tonight for student reassignment and not to redistrict because we've done that and you cannot do that for every three years. So we're going to ask tonight for reassignment of students. Our need is at Townsend, we do not have any space there, they're maxed out. And so our discussion, we centered around that, that we're going to ask you to approve Townsend to become a pre-K 5 school rather than a pre-K 8 school. And that means that South Robinson would no longer be an intermediate school, but will be a true middle school serving grades 6, 7, and 8. And the fourth graders now, fifth graders next year will remain at Fair Grove Elementary. So that's, that's what's driving is overcrowdedness at Townsend Elementary School now. So I ask team members that's on, if you come up and share everything from transportation to the athletics, what our request and this, after discussion, we will move this to an action item for Tuesday night also.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a general question?
Got Mr. Goose in that stand?
Actually, I think it might be. Excellent. It's athletic, excellent.
I got Jerome down there. Those drones under transportation. New position. Dr. Manuel?
I can see it now. So you're going to give us the number, what it was, and then what it will be as you're talking?
Yes.
Okay, I can see. All right, that'll make it clear for me.
Good evening. So just some information on Townsend Middle School Athletics. And just going back to 2017 was the last year that Townsend had a football team that completed the season. In 2017, they had teams in every sport, volleyball, basketball, baseball, and softball. 2018.
Yeah, I, I got that. Yeah, I got that.
Okay, 2018, no football team. They did have sports in volleyball, basketball, baseball, softball. Again, in 2019, no football. COVID, they did have volleyball and basketball. COVID hit in the spring, so they weren't able to do baseball, softball. COVID season was 220 this school year. They did have a football team. They, they started a football team and that was due to the principal, Ms. Faulkner. Had a long conversation with Ms. Faulkner back in the summer. We talked about footballs, you know, Ms. Faulkner, whatever. We need, we need to get this football program back up and running. The kids really need it. And she, she really hustled. She hustled and she got enough kids out to start the team. But after two games, she had to have a bunch of players to quit. And so they only got to play two games. I think they started with 21 players. They ended up with about 10, 11 players. And so. And so, you know, those 10, 11 players still wanted to play football, but they didn't have the opportunity to play, didn't have the opportunity to finish the season because they, they just weren't enough players to complete the team. They did have volleyball, they had basketball. This spring, they have no sports there, no baseball and no softball. They had seven players sign up for baseball, had six young ladies sign up for softball. And that's seven baseball players and six softball players that, again, wanted to play, but did not have the opportunity because there were just not enough of students there to field a team. And starting middle school soccer this year, they also did not have soccer. We all know athletics is the, one of the biggest dropout prevention programs in the country. And we need to give these, these students at Townsend that want to be able to participate an opportunity to participate in athletics. And we know once they're involved in athletics, then their grades are better, their attendance is better. They're more excited about coming to school. And their attitudes are better. So we, we definitely need to give these students at Townsend the opportunity to participate. As far as the numbers go, this school year, according to what I pulled off of Power School, and seventh and eighth graders can play football, sixth graders cannot. They had 108 students in the seventh and eighth grade. Now, that was male and female. I wasn't able to pull just the male and female off of there. But if half of those were male, you're looking at 54 male students in the seventh and eighth grade. And in order to have a decent numbers on the football team, you'd have to get at least half of those to participate. And again, that's kind of hard to do. That's about all I have as far as that goes. But again, you know, if we have those kids that want to participate, then we need to give them the opportunity to participate. And as far as the facilities at South Robinson, South Robinson has the nicest middle school facilities in the county now. So, you know, it used to be a high school, now it's a middle school. So they have really nice facilities. Where at Townsend, if they did have baseball and softball teams, they would have to go across town to the county park to play. They don't, don't have them there on campus. They were able to play football there on campus, but the facility was not, not very good. Any questions?
Mrs., yes, Mr. Jerome, I got a couple of questions. Number one. Now, how would these kids, you know, when they did a consolidation a couple of years ago with South Robinson from lost a lot of kids to sports due to the parents would not take them or could not get them to and from practice? Now, this is 20 miles, it's about a 20 mile difference from Townsend to South Robinson intermediate. What are our plans as a board to get the kids to or from practice? Now, we, we, we hire drivers, we hire staff, everything else. What is our plan to get the kids to or from these sports and extracurricular activities? Because that's the big thing. You're going to lose a lot of kids. A lot of parents won't take their kids, a lot of parents at work and stuff, and won't be able to take their kids. So what are we going to do for that?
And that, that, that was one of our concerns also as far as transportation. And, and, you know, have some conversation with Dr. Williamson. That's something that we are going to work on. Whether it's, you know, getting a bus driver to get them back home in the afternoons or whatever we need to do. But that is something that we have discussed and something that we are willing to work on.
And this question is to Ms. Freeman because that is an equity issue and we have to provide those opportunities, correct?
Go ahead, Dr.
Just, just a follow-up. No, the same thing was, the same thing was promised and stuff to the kids that, that, that we sent from South Robinson to Fremont. The same thing was promised. I want to know as the board, are we going to follow through with our promise to get these kids back and forth? Because it was promised, it never happened.
May I respond? That is going to be part of the request for approval. So that's just if the board approves, do you take action on this request?
Mr. Chairman, and we discussed it the other day because for Purnell Sweat, that's what we do for Maxton. We have a bus that takes those students there and they meet at a certain location. But the administration is supposed to be working on it.
Yeah, I know, and I know at Purnell Sweat for 20-plus years, they use the activity bus to get those kids back and forth from Purnell Sweat to Maxton. Now, that was coaches doing that at the time. Just different coaches would drive the bus different days to go pick them up and, and take them back. Right, middle school, you, you're not going to have enough coaches to do that. So we got to come up with another solution to do that. But it, yeah, it definitely needs to be done.
I heard in beginning that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the recommendation was going to be that Townsend would be pre-K5 instead of pre-K8. And the ones that can play in athletics is sixth, eighth graders?
Seventh, eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth graders?
Seventh, seventh and eighth grade can play football. Sixth through eighth can play all the other sports. Sixth graders cannot play football.
So if you, if you relabel Townsend pre-K5, it won't be a concern to transport, will they? Students from Townsend?
Well, you'll, you'll have those kids that stay in that district, in that Townsend district, that'll be coming all the way to South Robinson. And they participate in sports, they're going to have to have a way to, to get back.
Well, if we, if we readjust those students to South Robinson, we're going to have to take care of transportation needs and bus in any way, right? So must, I mean.
That's beyond the normal school operation hours. It would not be an issue in the morning, afternoon, after they for practice, so buses would run. So it's going to be a need because it's after school hours.
Yeah, that would just be in the afternoon, like after practice, getting them back home, after games, getting them back home.
Plus, that would put the students at the better field to play the sports then. Then it's, it's the more upgraded field.
Oh, they would definitely have better, better facilities. Yes, sir.
May.
Randy.
It will also give them an opportunity to have a middle school concept, which is what we talked about several years ago, having a middle school concept, but we did not have it. And Townsend is steadily putting on more numbers of the younger children than the older ones.
Mike. Craig?
I'll make a comment. The numbers have been an issue as far as athletics with Townsend for years. I was assistant principal there in the 90s. It was an issue then. Now, I'm like, Mr. Vonte, I see the need of moving them to South Robinson. For the, now, we're just talking athletics now, just from the athletic standpoint. There's other reasonings that's going to come up here. But if we are moving them to South Robinson from the athletic standpoint, then we do, in my opinion, have to provide that opportunity for transportation. Because it, they get through at practice at 5:30 and they've been moved to a school now that's an hour plus away. We go there with a bus and a driver to provide transportation. Now, you're going to have to get into, not saying you're carrying all these kids to their home. I don't know if you're doing that, if you're going to have a general location. That's what they did with Sweat. I know these were high school students. That's what was done there. They were carried back to a general location. And that's where the drop-off was, and parents knew that's where it was at and gave them a reasonable time as when that would be. Now, what will come up, and it's something we would have to look at, let's say we're dealing with football. Now, if you're carrying 10 or 15 kids back, okay. If you got one kid on the bus, then you might have to sit around and answer that question, how are we going to handle that? But does that opportunity need to be provided? Yes, it does. To, because we need the kids playing ball. If, if they've got a chance and they want to play, we don't need these situations where we play in two ballgames or one ballgame and then having to stop because the numbers are not there. So whatever we could do to get that done for the kids so they can play, it needs to be done. And this would be in a middle school, would probably have to be hiring bus drivers and using, I guess, our regular buses instead of activity buses to make this transportation.
And, and the drop-off will be back to Townsend.
Townsend school, okay, that would work.
And Mr. Chairman, and I, and I don't want us to just focus on the athletics only because we're looking at an overcrowdedness issue that we got to meet is the main purpose that's driving this.
Well, I just addressed that because this was just athletics now. I think there's other parts too, definitely. Most definitely, there's other parts to this equation.
Okay.
Yes, I also want us to look at depending on what sport it is, whether it's football, you have more players there, whether it's basketball. We could look at buses or some contracted van drivers and stuff like that. So I want us to be able to look at both of them depending on what sport it is and also depending on how many numerous students and stuff are going to be playing sports.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you.
Who we going next? The Guzman coming? Okay.
Yes, sir. To answer some of the other questions, I know logistics is what also drives this. And so in order to give you a clearer picture, within your packets are the three bus routes that would be created for Townsend to be going to South Robinson. We took every single student on in that area from sixth, seventh, and eighth and plotted them. The only students that were not plotted were, of course, the out-of-district students. So by taking those students, we then found that we needed three buses. And in front of you is the ride times. Unfortunately, for these ride times, these are some lengthy ride times. But as we all know, the geography of the county in which we live in drives, unfortunately, sometimes the numbers of what we have to deal with logistically. So of course, these are the ride times on these buses. One hour and 15 minutes, one hour and 24 minutes, one hour and 20 minutes. That's going all the way out, picking up, and then coming back. That's the longest ride that a student will be on that bus. And so we went ahead, also provided you with those routes within your packet for you to go ahead and take a look to see logistically, as well as on a map, what sections we're picking up and what those routes would look like.
And Dr. Guzman, they will be still going out to get them at their same bus route time as before, correct?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. The, what this time we adjusted, there is what we like to call in the business dead time. So there will be about a 25 to 30 minute timeframe in which the bus driver will be on the bus going out to get to the location and then pick up the first student. The first student will then get picked up. Those are the ride times of what that first student would be. And then the arrival time would be 8 o'clock to the middle school.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
And also during, I call it dead zone time. Did we work it out where we could put something on the bus that the students could be looking at?
Excuse me. Yes, ma'am. What, the joy of what this board did during, prior to the pandemic was to be able to provide bus wifi for students throughout our district. And so we would then be able to move assets around to be able to provide those students with the availability to be able to access that wifi in order to be able to use that time productively. Other counties do have and utilize that during the daytime on yellow buses. And so we would just go ahead and continue to utilize those resources that are already been implemented at our fingertips.
This question is for you, Dr. Williamson. This is, as I look at some of these times, hour and 15 minutes, hour and 24 minutes, hour and 20 minutes. This is a long time for students and stuff to be on the bus. All right, this problem was created four or five years ago. Now, we're just putting a Band-Aid on this problem. What is our long-term goal and stuff? What is our long-term goal and what is our long-term plan for this? I mean, we just moving to South Robinson for the meantime, but what is our long-term goal? I mean, because this is, I just can't agree with keeping kids on the bus this long.
Let me ask Dr. Guzman, we already have routes for an hour and 24, so kids are already riding.
Yes, sir. There's other areas within this county in which other schools have similar routes. I cannot attest to, especially in the Purnell Sweat area, some of them routes can get up to about an hour and 25 minutes of what they're going through. Unfortunately, that's a geographical issue that we battle with within the county, being the largest county in North Carolina, as well as with the locations of other municipalities in relation to other schools. So as this looks larger, yes, but as far as compared to maybe a Purnell Sweat route or some of the others, unfortunately, they are consistent with what we have to be able to provide due to the mere laws of physics and the geography of what we're dealing with in the county.
And then the second part of your question. At some point, once we begin construction on a career center, then we'll take a look at our long-range facility needs plan and start that conversation for the future.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions, comment? Yeah.
You know, in our discussion of that, I don't really like the long time, but that's the only thing that we have right now to help meet federal guidelines is to reside it. Because Townsend, as a fourth state, is taking in students right now still. And there may be more younger children coming again, you know, we got to do something.
Thank you.
All righty.
I have a question. This, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Emmanuel.
Maybe this for superintendent, you speaking of next year doing this, the school term?
Yes.
All right, do you have to have some meeting with parents to alert them before?
We will. If you take action on Tuesday night and approve the action, then we will set a meeting with parents and answer any questions or concern that they might have. Yes.
At this time, Ms. Melissa's got the floor.
Thank you.
Are you talking about South Robinson Middle School Concept?
Yes, and so I've asked that we go back to Slide 3, Student Reassignment. If we can start there, I know there were some questions about the numbers changing. So Townsend will only be 283 students where it was previously 469. But the problem is, right now, we are having so many issues with the physical space. That K5 population, pre-K5 population, they are so overcrowded. We really do not have physical space to put additional teachers in the building so that we can separate our students the way they need to be separated. So this is going to allow us for smaller class sizes and more teachers among the pre-K5 span. So the enrollment will be dropping, but it's going to be such a bigger advantage for our students as far as learning. Then for South Robinson Intermediate, it's 402 students where right now it's at around 265. And the disadvantage there is that we're trying to run or operate a middle school and it's almost impossible to put the needed amount of teachers in a school like that for middle school. A middle school needs at least three to four teachers on each grade level. Well, the state allotment doesn't allow us to put that there because we don't have the student population. So they won't give us the funds to, to put, you know, to put the faculty there that we need. So this is going to allow us to have more students, which means more teachers. And that's going to help with the middle schools because they are more grade-specific. Whereas our other, like our K5 is more, they're self-contained in one classroom where the teacher's teaching all core areas, where our others are not. Okay, and then Fair Grove, right now, they're at 247, they'll go back up to 294. So they'll have additional teachers there as well when we add the fifth grade back. Now, if we move to the Slide 5, Teacher Allocation.
And Dr. Williamson, it is not the intent of closing those schools, correct?
That is correct.
Ms. Mike, I have a question. I want to go back to Townsend, go back to your other slide a minute, Ms. Melissa.
Three.
Okay, you indicated that, which you're right, that you had would reduce the number of teachers at Townsend, right? Correct? All right, now, what about their areas of certification? You're going to have to play with that some there then at Townsend when you reduce those numbers, is that correct? Now, is that going to be an issue for you, the areas of certification there?
It should not, but we're going to work with the areas of certification so that we can, if they're middle school certified, then they, we will most likely ask to move them to South Robinson.
Okay, thank you.
Or wherever else we have vacancies.
Any other comments or questions?
So when we, when we. So when we, when we look at the teacher allocation slide, Townsend's would be a pre-K-five school. Fifteen teachers, there were twenty-three, but you're looking at middle school teachers as well. So we need to move some of those teachers to the middle school.
That's a question. So we had the conversation about class size at Townsend. And Ms. Freeman, we have some additional funds, so this would not increase class sizes for the pre-K-five classes, correct?
No, it would not. It would remain, it would not be a problem at all for us to do that.
So with this, we would be reassigning grades six, seven, and eight to South Robinson. And the biggest goal here is making smaller class sizes for our pre-K-five students at Townsend Middle School. Which will be Townsend, hopefully. We changed that to elementary. Next slide, please. South Robinson Intermediate would be grades six through eight with seventeen teachers. Right now, we're looking at eleven teachers. And that is very difficult for a principal to really operate a school with eleven teachers. We've tried to supplement that with other funding, Ms. Jennifer's funding, like Title I, but it's still very difficult to do. So by this, we'll have more teachers. We would be reassigning the fifth grade to Southside Ashpole. Right now, Southside Ashpole, some of those students have asked to come for transfers. Some of those students in fifth grade at Southside have actually transferred to South Rob. So Southside will get those students back, and we would have grades six through eight. This would be a true middle school, which would help with athletics as well as having more teachers on each grade level for core specified subjects.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, sir. Sir, I have one more.
Okay.
And lastly, Fair Grove would be pre-K-five. They would gain two teachers. Right now, it's thirteen, so we're reassigning the fifth grade back to Fair Grove School. And they have lots of space, so this is gonna, you know, it's gonna help at Fair Grove too, so we can use up that classroom space. Any questions?
Craig.
Oh, and this is asking this in lieu of Tuesday night. Dr. Williamson and Ms. Melissa, whoever, we've heard several reasons, I guess you could say, all these are reasons for doing this, and it needs to be done now. And it's not closing the school, it's reassigning. So is it safe to say this is something that, I'm looking at, it's April, we're telling people we're doing this now, and we start school in the fall? Is it safe to say it's something we don't need to wait a year to do because of the situations at all three schools? It's not one thing in particular?
The real issue is that Townsend and overcrowding is there.
That would be number one.
That's number one. And then number two would be the fellow program equity, athletic opportunities for students. It is something that we need to get completed and have in place in the fall. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, also, I just noticed that no teachers will be eliminated in this process either. If my, if my addition is correct, we're just relocating teachers like we're relocating students.
That's correct, and based on certification.
Eric.
I also just wanted to mention, it was on the slide, that the principals will be held harmless. You know, the principal's salary now is based on the ADM at the school. So that typically changes every January, so it wouldn't change at all until January of 2023. But we've had that discussion to also hold the principal's salaries harmless as well.
So as we increase the numbers at South Rob, almost doubling those numbers, and then the need for student supervision will also increase with that. We've had conversations in cabinet to take a look at all of our middle schools in terms of, of do we need additional supervision of kids' support? That does not necessarily mean that we will add an additional AP, but we're, we're thinking about adding an additional adult male, probably in most cases, that can help with that supervision. So that's part of our conversation and probably going to make that a reality.
Any other comments, questions? John?
Um, I guess it's for Dr. Wilson. The three trails or four trails that we got that go to Townsend, what we going to do with those? What we going to leave them there? Are we going to sell them or move them, or what?
Talking about the new units we just put there, they're used, one of those units was office space, if I remember Bobby correctly. And then the other two will probably put counselors or whatever the need might be. So, so no, we were not.
Mr. Chair and Board, so about a month ago, I walked the entire campus, and every space in that school was currently being used. The two mobile units that, there are actually four classrooms located outside, two are kindergarten, two are EC. So of course, then we can move our kindergarten back in the building, which of course is a lot safer than them being in those mobile units. But again, we could have resources in those mobile units out there. So again, just space is very limited at Townsend. It's not limited, there is none. So, so again, that could be used for those mobile units that are currently there.
Some reason we're taking on more from the pre-K area to the grade five, so there could still be space if we continue to take on like we're taking on. But people bringing the students back from Scotland and other places back to our county.
If no other questions, again, it is our intent to move this to an action item on Tuesday night. Thank you.
Now we, we're down to Dr. Ms. Freeman. Ms. Jennifer Freeman, the School Justice Partnership.
So that'll be slide nine for us, please. So, good evening, Chairman Smith, Superintendent Williamson, and board members. Recently, we met with Judge McIntyre, Judge Clark, District Attorney Matt Smith, I'm sorry, Matt Scott, and also juvenile justice personnel. And the purpose of that meeting for us was to look at establishing a successful school justice partnership. So when we met with those individuals, what we talked about was what really is the school justice partnership? So the school justice partnership is actually a group of community stakeholders who work together to actually work to reduce the number of juvenile referrals to the court system by implementing effective strategies to address student misconduct. So when we were there, Judge McIntyre gave us some very, very startling data, from my opinion, and also from the members that were present there. You'll take a glance at the slide behind you. What we looked at is we looked at the data from 2018 and 2019, and it's known as the Juvenile Delinquency Court Complaints. Went all the way back to 2018 and nineteen because that's pre-pandemic, so that is the only data that we, that was shared with us. During that time, there was two hundred and thirty juvenile delinquency court complaints. Want you to think for just a moment of what that is about. Those complaints came from Robinson County, fifty-six point five percent came from school-based complaints. PSRC is the fourth highest in North Carolina behind Mecklenburg, Wake, and Union Counties. Next slide, please. So what, why do those numbers really, really matter? So we all know, sitting in this room, that once the contact is made with the juvenile justice system, it increases the likelihood that youth will reoffend. It also produces lower academic achievement. This is the data that was shared with us by Judge McIntyre. Thirty-one percent of the students who were suspended or expelled repeated a grade compared to five percent who were not. Ten percent of the students who were suspended or expelled dropped out of school. For me, that is an alarming number, and I'm sure it is for you as you're sitting here thinking about what that means. Next slide. So in the conversation, we began having a conversation. So really, what, if we're making that many complaints, what are we doing in the public schools of Robinson County to support our students? So in the department that I provide oversight, we've actually recently started a framework for school improvement. It's been around for quite some time. It's not anything new. It's called MTSS or the Multi-Tierred System of Support. Many of you know Dr. Tara Bullard, she certainly currently serves as our MTSS supervisor. And she is doing a phenomenal job with providing those supports to our students. What we've talked about in those multi-tiered systems of support, we also have an academic component and a behavior core component. So we're really taking a good look at our ODR data, we're looking at our suspension data. We're having conversations, well, what's really happening and why do we see what we see? So there's a lot of conversation internally to actually look at the documentation that is leading to these court complaints. So within that, we've also started talking about internally the Care Council. The Care Council is a new initiative that actually is led by Shanita Lee. And with that, we're targeting K-three students and their attendance. We've already started our partnerships. We have partnerships with the Department of Social Services, also the District Attorney, Matt Scott. And we've just coming to the table and saying, let's talk about this, let's prevent this. Because those students in K-three, we know that that is a crucial grades span for them, and attendance is key. So it's not our intent to take them to court and the families to court. Yes, we will if necessary, but let's think about it for a moment. The intent should be to prevent. And so with prevention, what we're starting doing with the Care Council, we're working through a process where we're actually looking at finding solutions with those families, working with those parents. So we're doing that in the department as well, so that's a new initiative that we have in place. We also have Mental Health First Aid that we're doing. We have trainers sitting in this room. Wendy's a trainer, I'm a trainer. We're working with Poe Health and et cetera. So those are the student supports that we're putting in the, or are in the district. However, yes, we have to refine them, but that is part of the contribution that we're working with, with the juvenile justice partnership. Next slide, please. So when we were there, what was startling to me, and I think it was startling to everyone in the room, Judge McIntyre looked at us and said, "We have nowhere, when these students come to us, we have nowhere to send them, but where?" "We have to find them, we have to do something because we have no alternative." So that came out loud and clear to us in that meeting. What is the solution? How are we going to work together in this partnership? So the needs for an alternative learning program were key. They stressed that to us in the conversation, and we continue to talk about that as we move forward. So with that, we are no longer actually have, do we have, you have a memorandum of agreement in your notebook. That is not the memorandum of agreement that we will have. That is a previous agreement. And so what we talked about is because of the needs or intents, that we will actually take six months or longer to develop a memorandum of agreement and how that partnership will look. So in terms of that, I'm going to turn it over to Bobby to talk with you about the suspensions and how that is looking and what that is leading to, to the court system.
Good evening. In your packet, we compiled a list of all of our long-term suspensions. I think yours may be dated as April first, and mine has a little bit more on it. But as you can see here, we currently, we are sitting at about seventy-five long-term suspensions for the school year. And that is broken down by what you have in your packet is for each school level. And we've actually identified the offense that, that each particular child would have committed in order to lead to that long-term suspension. As every, it said the part where we, this School Partnership for Justice after the long-term suspension policy or alternative program policy. Two pages before able. And so as you can see here, I put a check on my paper because one thing COVID did, COVID allowed us to provide remote instruction to our students. So in the past, where we would have had these seventy-five students go home with no alternative learning program, we are able now to provide these children with remote instruction in lieu of long-term suspensions. So yes, the behavior does cause them to have to remove themselves from campus, but we still are providing that instruction to them. One of the biggest things, if you look at these numbers, of course, we expect our numbers to be higher at the high school level. But you do see we have some middle school situations where we've had the discipline children based upon their behavior. And I can share with you, without having a stable learning alternative program for our middle schools, these numbers are extremely low. Our middle school principals are doing a great job dealing with discipline issues on campus, but we need a place for these children to go to get that extra support, to get that extra attention they need to become the productive citizens that we want. But again, we just wanted to share with you all of our long-term suspension numbers up to this point. And if you have any questions about those, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Doc, Mr. Bobby, my concern is the transportation for those students.
And, and we have already discussed that because we know on day one, we're not going to have a hundred children or two hundred children there. So what Dr. Guzman and I have originally discussed is that we would have a community stop. So if we have middle schoolers, buses would transport them to the high school. We would have one bus that would leave the high school, then go to LAP. And as the program expanded, then we would begin to adjust our transportation based upon the number of students in the program. So we're going to start with at least six buses that are, five, I'm sorry, five buses that are going to run to LAP from each individual high school. Then, you know, it's going to expand from there.
Right. So what do they do when we bring the students to court for chewing gum? So that's really important with the work that we're doing. And I wanted to bring that out because there was a lot of conversation about the need to support those students because of before they get to the court system, once they offend, the likelihood of them reoffending is triple or even more, Mr. Grady, and I know you're well aware of that. So that was just a meaty conversation that we had about the need to help our students stay in school or have an alternative to their learning, because the goal is, is to for every student to have a quality of education.
You may talk about this.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Let me listen to him. He may talk about it.
Well, I was going to say, so our intent for Tuesday night, you do, we do have a policy in place, policy thirty-four seventy slash forty-three oh five that authorized learning alternative program. And, and so we're going to ask you as a board to approve that for us so that we can finalize our planning, create the document that would spell out the criteria of all those kinds of things. But you already have a policy in place that will allow us to do that. So then one of the questions would be, what changes about LAP now, which is a learning accelerated program that's basically doing course recovery? That moves back to the individual high schools, that we can do that course recovery work at the high schools. But our intent on Monday, Tuesday, is to ask you to approve from policy thirty-four seventy, forty-three oh five, the approval of a learning alternative program.
Mrs. Superintendent, I need more information on what you're just saying. So you're saying this man or the LAP, as it is, take the recovery back to the high schools? I disagree with that. You got not, I'm just one board member. I disagree with that. You got not, I'm just one board member. I'm sorry. Have you even read the LAP manual, how it was developed? Have you read, LAP has a manual and the manual is developed through the state board. It is recognized by the state board as the Public Schools of Robinson County's Alternative School Program. And if you read in the manual, if somebody would take time to read that, that manual encompasses, it is a, you can take that manual and those children that are suspended, those children that are in court, they could be referred back to the LAP program. I think it would be a disaster to do that because principal has, they have the autonomy at the high schools whether to put those children in or out. And I think to put that decision back to the high schools, we've done there and been done that. And we're going to lose some of the children that are going to LAP now to graduate. So I have an issue with taking that issue out of LAP, putting it back into high school. So what, what is LAP going to do if then if you're putting recovery back in the high school? What's the purpose of the LAP as it is now?
Well.
What would be.
Our intent is not to have the long-term students, which means they're home. LAP as it is operating now. Majority of those students are being served from home. So they really are not physically in the building anyway.
Listen, I mean, not, not disputing what you're saying, but if somebody would stop and read the manual, it is not set up like that. I don't know how it's operating now. I'm not, of course, I'm not in the school system in that leadership role. But the manual, somebody take time to read the LAP manual. It is not set up like that. It's set up exactly what you're saying. But to say discard that program now, go start another one. When you've got the ideal program to do everything what you're saying, I, I, I disagree with that, which I'm one vote. But I think somebody needs to leave, read the LAP manual as it is now. I think would be a disservice. Somebody go down to LAP and talk to those children. You see, right now, we have one high school principal has said, and I quote, "I do not support LAP. I do not support giving these children credit recovery. I do not support that." And see, I have an issue when we do not support giving children ever opportunity to complete their education. Some children are not going to make it back in school. They won't. They will not make it, period.
Well, we're not saying that we're not going to continue course recovery. It's our intent that kids that need to recover those classes continue to do that. But we can meet that need and that function from the high schools. Doesn't, so really, if the conversation is about a site or a program need, we can meet that need. We're not doing away with course recovery. We simply going to serve the students at their high schools.
I don't think that would work with some children. They couldn't make it at the high school site. That was part of the issue.
Right, right. But part of the definition of an alternative school is not only students assigned to an alternative school are there because of behavior.
That's correct.
And, and so we would not use, lose that function or that opportunity.
Well, will you please, just for my sake or anybody else's sake, read the manual, the LAP manual as it was presented? Would you do that for me, please?
Yes. We're, we're not going to deny any student a chance for course recovery. Or, you know, again, we're suffering with sending kids home and they're not connected to the learning. So we, we need an alternative program. And we're going to meet the need of every child and if that's smaller school setting, class size setting, serve the student best. That's what we would do. So it's really going to continue to serve both needs. But the primary would be for the alternative program. I promise you, we'll continue to meet the needs of kids.
It is an alternative program and it's recognized by the state. I just want you to know that and everybody to know that. But do not discard this. It's not a program open for all children. That's just my stake on it.
Mr. Chairman, to echo back on what Dr. Emman was talking about, was one of the reasons that it bothered because of that same thing, which did encompasses all of the individuals that was having a problem with the court system. The difference is, this one's going to have middle school students. The one we had before, we had to be high school students only for the LAP. And like Dr. Emman said, that manual is there and we came to this process because of principals not giving students an opportunity to recover. It bought a dropout rate up and everything because some children had to work because of needs for families. But the manual will tell you more how they derived it, the program and everything. I'm, I'm on medication, y'all, so y'all just bear with me, okay? But anyway, that was the reason that everything came into play.
Good, great.
I'll just add this part, the, the LAP program, minute it was started, was you have kids, and I've been to many of the graduations. They just couldn't make it in regular high school. They, they could not make it, and I could call every high school in this county. And most of the time, it was a behavior issue. And so they ended up going to LAP. The classroom, as far as the work type, there was a different pressure or whatever going on there than it would be at that high school. So now, sending those kids back to high school to get what they would need, I think, I think too, there's something needs to be really looked at closely before we make that kind of change. Because now for me, and I know people say, well, it's not the same rigor at LAP that it is at a high school. I'm not there every day. But if, if they're getting the work done and meeting the criteria that says you have to meet to get a diploma, you know, I still think we need to do everything we can to make sure that these kids do graduate. I'm not saying something watered down, but if it's meeting criteria, then so be it. And I don't know if some of them that I've talked to, some of these kids, if they go back to school legs, will they be able to finish? So I would just say, let's look at it in all, all aspects of it before we go to add or eliminate and whatever.
We would do that. We'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to provide just a brief update. If you'll notice on the slide, we have immunizations and North Carolina health assessments. I would like to give a really big shout out to the school nurses. And last year, we formulated a team of social workers, YDS, and all of us just got together to actually reduce those numbers. This year, we've had the same great team working together. And I would like to share with you, as of today, we have seventeen students that are out of compliance with immunizations. We have twelve students that are out of compliance with North Carolina health assessments and two students that are out of both. So I am just very pleased to stand before you and share that information because there is a powerful team behind that work and they've done a really, really good job.
Okay. Andrew.
Dr. Freeman, question for you. The announcement that I saw on our email about the program that was going around with the bus?
Yes, the Robinson County Healthcare Mobile Bus.
Will they be targeting some of these schools here that's out of compliance?
They have already targeted those schools. We put together that, we actually started the process. We had a delay in February. The reason we had the delay in February, those folks that were actually on the bus actually contacted COVID. So it kept delaying our process and we ran into that. But we've been working with the Robinson County Healthcare Corporation Mobile Bus since February. We actually have additional sites that we'll be visiting. They are currently helping us with the kindergarten registration, but we're looping around. The school that has the largest number is one of our high schools because of the twelfth graders. But they're actually, we're actually on target to go visit those schools. So we are using them to help with that process and they're doing a great job. We've had quite a few takers of students that actually do go to the mobile health bus. So it's been an outstanding partnership for us this year as well.
The reason why I asked that is I've had some, I had a parent to make a comment to me that they were trying to get, her child was out of, was one of these and that she was trying to get an appointment to get that immunization and work with her work schedule and it was very difficult to do. It was like scheduled a month out.
So if, is the parent still needing that support?
From my understanding, she does.
So what we'll do is the process has been that we had intake documents where the counselors worked with that process and we actually sought out with the nurses. We had a extensive process. But if you'll give me that name, I'll make certain that we get that person contacted and we'll see what we can do to help that student because we want all of our students in school face to face.
And again, I just want to shout out to Ms. Freeman and her leadership in helping us to resolve this issue and reduce those numbers. Thank you so much.
I don't recall seeing on our website. I do know some school district got on there what's required because so many people now are moving from the north to the south. And some of their children don't, are not required to have same, the same immunization that our students are. Can we have that put on our website, what's required of those students? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there some personnel where we?
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Board Member Superintendent Williamson. At our last board member, at our last board meeting, you approved our ABL Master Scheduling Platform. So we just want to give you some updates where we are and all the great things that are happening with our partner. We had our kickoff meeting on March eighteenth. And that was a meeting that was held with the district team along with our principals. And that was principals in K, K through twelve. Because we wanted to make sure that they were all introduced to our project manager, which is Mary Lane. And Mary Lane and I have become very good friends because we talked three or four times a day. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Davis and I were talking today and then we got like two or three emails. So she is constantly keeping us up to date on how the platform is going along with Mr. Bobby and his department with Power School. So this has been a wonderful, wonderful partnership. It has started off, we are communicating, we're making sure that the principals are getting what they need, the data managers. I'm going to ask Mr. Davis to come up because he has been very instrumental in making sure he done the research. He and Ms. Jadae Hawkes really worked hard. So I want him to, to be recognized for getting this partnership together for us. But just a few things before we move forward is that we want to make sure that all of our students have the opportunity when they leave middle school. Because we know that high schools, once they leave eighth grade, that our students are not getting the opportunities they need. And that's why we have made sure that in this year, that with major clarity, we have started with fourth grade, making sure that we're talking to kids about their careers, what they want to do when they graduate. Because, you know, we hear a lot about career and college readiness, but college is career. So we want to make sure, and some of the board members, you were talking about the Career Expo. I had the pleasure of going there the first day and making the second day. I ran into Mr. Craig. And those students were just so, I mean, you could tell those eighth graders just want to, how do I get into this class? What do I do? So why do we deprive an eighth grader, one into ninth grade, from going to the Robinson County Career Center? That is my question. And that's why we're trying to alleviate, so that we don't have those issues. Because if that student wants to take pharmacy tech, that student should have the right and the opportunity. We call that equity, so they can make sure that they get all the classes they need because they want to be a pharmacist when they grow up. And that is so important and that is why this platform is going to help us. Mr. Davis, I know you wanted to add a few words and then I'll come back.
I see mentioned with the equity piece, this is going to allow us to look and find instructional time in our school day. This is going to look at being able to match what students want, like Dr. Locklear was talking about, with their first choice. So if a student wants to take a class at the Career Center or if they want to take one that is offered in the platform or in the high school manual, but may not possibly be offered, this platform is going to find ways to be able to figure out how that child can take that course and get what they need. It will also allow us to look at our staffing. It'll allow us to look at where staff is needed, where staff is, is overstaffed. This will eventually end up allowing us as a district to save money as well as to find personnel. We know some schools that need are overloaded with core teachers. So we'll be able to figure out where they are and not be able to spend the money because we already have them in our district. Also, that's going to allow us to look at equitable opportunities for students. We mentioned with, with the athletics, it's going to be able to take into consideration transcript analysis. So when a child or student does want to go to the RCC or go to a four-year university, they're going to see that track well before the eleventh or twelfth grade year. And they'll be able to plug those in so that they can start having those conversations about the college and career ready even as early as eighth and ninth grade. So we're confident that this platform is going to help us succeed and lay the foundation for our school system.
So as I said, working with our project manager and, and her team, we have emphasized that for our K five schools that they will have a one hundred and twenty-minute schedule of literacy every day. Dr. Manuel, that phonics, having that sixty minutes of the phonics and the phonemic awareness is really going to help our K, K one teachers and our K two, K ones students as well because we know that is where we're really struggling. As a matter of fact, on our regional quarterly meeting today, that was, a lot of the discussion was about how are we going to help those students in first and second grade? Because those numbers are really across the nation is, you know, is, we know that's an area that we really need to focus on. And that's because they did not get the phonics and the phonemic awareness. They didn't get those reading foundational skills that they needed in that pre-K and kindergarten when they were out during those two years. So with that being said, they'll have a hundred and twenty minutes of ELA. They'll have ninety minutes of mathematics and these are going to be uninterrupted. And we are doing everything we can to work with, with our partners to make sure that that does happen. And like Ms. Thompson said, it depends on the number of teachers, the resources. But that is a priority that we have reemphasized so many times that we want those to be uninterrupted. Because we know that if we have sixty minutes and then we go to a resource class and then we come back, it's, it's just not conducive. And so we've asked that, we please keep a check on those. And then we have thirty to forty-five minutes for recess. And then, of course, the sixty minutes for science and social studies. Another priority is we want to make sure that our teachers have time for collaboration. So we want to make sure they have that scheduled planning time each week. Because I'm going to talk to you about letters in just a second, how important it is that principals, as the instructional leader and their academic coach and their assistant principal, that team can come together and work with those grade levels on any particular area that they may need. So you'll hear more about that, like I said, with letters. But we want to make sure that our students, all of our students, because you've heard that word equity so many times, that every student has the schedule when they start on day one. Because, and Ms. Simmons, he was the resource officer at Lomerton High School. What happens on that first day of school? You got about what, three, four hundred kids in the foyer trying to change their schedule? When our students leave at the end of this year, they should have a, they will have a schedule in their hand for the upcoming school year. That is, that is a non-negotiable. So when Johnny comes to school on the first day, which is going to be August the twenty-ninth, it is a first day of instruction. Not, we wait two weeks because we're trying to work out schedules because our schedules are geared toward teachers and not geared toward students. That has to change because we are here for the students. We have to meet the students' needs. We don't, we, I know we have some schools where they have planning in the, in the fourth period for their EOCs. But what about our students? Is that really helping our students? And so we've asked that, you know, we don't have all of our biology teachers having the same planning period. We want to have that cross category where the students are grouped in with that team. So those teachers in, in science and mathematics and English and math, they all can come together and talk about that, that group of students. Because those are teachers that are working with them. We have to, we have to refocus and we have to change our mindsets as leaders. We're the educators. We're, we supposed to come up with a plan of action that's going to help our students. And that's going to take a lot of mindsets changing in a short period of time. But we must do it in order to meet the needs of the students. And that's why this platform is so, I have, and Mr. Davis and I are probably on the phone just about every evening because we get emails from them. And I was like, did you check that email, you know? And Mr. Bobby and I were talking the other day with a Power School issue. This is really going to help our district move forward because it's going to meet the needs of our students. And I made one last statement here on this. It says, "Schedules are being built to be responsive to all students' requests." Because it doesn't matter if that student's at Townsend. Because it doesn't matter if that student's at Townsend, that student's at Prospect, that student's at Lumberton Junior, it doesn't matter. If that child wants to take English 2 in this in this term, that student should have the opportunity to take. Instead, we set in that child's schedule and that's what's happening. We as adults are determining the child's schedule. And I got a note the other day from a from a parent. And she said, "This is what my child came home with," an eighth grader, and said that the school said, "This is the only classes you can take." Now that hurts when a parent calls and tells you that, that these are the only classes my child can take. So we've already confronted that issue because it's not that I want all of my ninth graders to take Math 1 and they get one elective and they can't go to the Career Center because we've never done that before. Why not? Why not a ninth grader go to the Robson County Career Center? Mr. Gensher, you were there, is there a problem with a ninth grader going to the Robson County Career Center? That's got to stop. It can't happen because it's all about meeting the students' needs. And we're going to ask, well, no, we got this approval, but we we want to make sure that we keep you updated on the, because this is a major investment that you have instilled upon us to take care, you know, make sure everything's taken care of. So we want to give updates whenever we need to because we want to make sure all of our students' needs are being met, okay?
Dr. Robert, I understand what you're saying. With the crisis we've been experiencing this past year with the lack of teachers, certified teachers in the classroom, how is that going to affect the ideal situation you just mentioned in making that accomplishment? What is our strategy to prevent or eliminate not having enough certified to teach to make this happen?
Ms. Thompson and her HR department have already started recruiting, they started a few weeks ago. So I know that they are working really hard to make sure every classroom on August the 29th, or really August the 22nd, the first day the teachers come back, that we have a certified teacher in every classroom. Because that, we know that, you know, there's a teacher shortage, but we want to make sure that we are letting people know that Robson County is the best district in the state of North Carolina, best district in the state. So we're going to do a great job and continue to recruit. Ms. Thompson, like I said, her team is doing an excellent job in that area.
Mr. Chairman, I love this plan that I just heard Dr. Locklear talk about. Because this would alleviate the issues that we have at graduation time and at other times when school is getting ready to get started. So Dr. Robert Locklear, I commend you, your staff, that'll take a lot of headaches away from us and particularly at graduation time.
Ms. Chair, I do want to mention several times tonight, we've heard about the Career Center and opportunity for students. We actually are going to start that process as early as fourth grade, that we're beginning to do career pathway aspiration. So by the time kids get to middle school and high school, they'll have some sense of what it is they want to do and what it will take. So we're actually starting that process through major clarity at grade four and aspiration. Ms. Chair, can we take a 10-minute break, please? Which means we'll come back at 7:35, 40, 7:40, please.
7:40.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
7:40, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman. Every three years, we have to update our AIG plans, so it is that time. So July 15th is the deadline. But we have asked our team to get in early because we know the month of July, we don't have all of our AIG folks around. So we will bring this to the board at our next meeting, April the 12th, for approval. We have already gotten the official word from our consultant, Ms. Beth Cross. So she has given us the blessing to go ahead and take it to the board. So I just want to give you some changes and justifications for the the new plan. Next slide, please. So of course, we're, we have been trying to find a universal screener. So our AIG specialists can test all second graders using the Naglere Non-Verbal Ability Test. So this test will help to show that the students who do not speak English or have a strong knowledge base can still be highly intelligent. And and with his background, wanted to provide a way to assess all students, especially gifted children from disadvantaged backgrounds. So this is really going to help with our non-speaking English students. This test also addresses the problem of identifying students who have limited opportunities to learn content or who struggle due to language or cultural differences. It also assesses reasoning and general ability, measures thinking, not knowledge. And the main goal is that we don't overlook any students who show potential. And the main goal is that we don't overlook any students who show potential for the AIG program. Next slide please. So the criteria for placement will change. Currently, we have, the criteria is five out of six. And you can see those there on the left side, the performance, A average, level five EOG, observation, teacher observation survey. Motivation comes from the teacher or parent. Interest survey is the student survey with the extracurricular activities. Also, we look at the ITBS assessment for achievement and also the aptitude test with the CAGR assessment. The new, go back please. So the new criteria will only include three out of four, which will be performance will be an A, B average. The needs for services, teacher, parent, or student survey or work samples will continue with the ITPS assessment. And of course, the level five on the EOG test will also be used as a criteria. And of course, we'll continue with the Nagli area and the CAGR assessment. For the online referral form, a student, teacher, or parent can access a form on the AIG site in order to refer a student, and this will make the referral process more equitable. So for the cluster classes in fifth through eight, since our fourth grade, most of those classes are blocked in lieu of pullout. This strategy will cultivate academic potential daily as compared to forty-five minutes one day per week. It will eliminate makeup work in core classes or barriers to other opportunities. Also, it will meet the AIG standard two, which outlines the achievement and growth of AIG and other students with advanced learning needs. And also, it will serve as a whole that outlines comprehensive programming within a total school community. Because we know that, we hear it all the time where, you know, parents are concerned that their child has been pulled out and they're having to make up work. So we're trying to alleviate that. So I just wanted to bring to your attention the demographics across our district. Currently, we have one thousand seven students identified as AIG. Five hundred and five of those are boys and five oh four girls. Asian fourteen, black one twenty, Hispanic one fifty-five, American Indian four twenty-six, Pacific Islander two, white two twenty-two, and two of more seventy of those. And then I wanted to show you, and it's in your packet, is the way it's broken down by school with all the different ethnicities. Because I know this question has come up over the last few months. What is the breakdown per school? So we did put this chart together for you, so I won't go through all of those. But if you have any questions when you look over that, you know, please just let me know. But that gives a complete breakdown across the thirty-six schools that we currently serve.
Mr. Rob, Dr. Robert, excuse me. You said that they were grouped, cluster grouped, that's homie genius grouping like kids together. So how long were these kids together? You said they weren't pulled out, which I agree with that. All right. They are grouped together. Will you talk about that just a second? I'm not quite clear. I know they can't be grouped all day.
Right. In our, in our classes in fifth through eight, so like if we put all of our AIG in our English class or in the math class.
Okay.
We're trying to make sure, because we only, we have eight teachers that serve all of our schools. So we're trying to make it more equitable. So our students will have that AIG teacher, you know, more frequently.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Uh, sort of, kind of sort of.
Okay.
I know there's illegal to group them all day.
Right, yeah, yeah, we don't do it all day, no.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Uh huh.
Craig.
Follow up to that, Dr. Robert.
Yes, sir.
Are we looking at our AIG teachers?
Ms. Thompson, I think we have an announcement for two additional, two additional AIG teachers, Mr. Craig, for the upcoming school year, two additional teachers, yes, sir.
Okay. Got a question, John? Okay. Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Chairman.
Robert, you in on the next thing, summer fall? Craig?
I wanted to go back to one thing before, Dr., oh, you finished with what you were doing there? You finished?
Yes, sir.
With AIG? Okay. I wanted to go back when you were talking about the scheduling. Were you saying that schedules for students would be ready before they get out of school this year?
Yes, sir.
Is that K-12?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a, I'm gonna say that's a good ambitious plan. But I'm gonna add this part to it if they are gonna get schedules ready. One thing that has not happened for years in many of our schools, it, when, when they got them ready in the fall, they didn't have resource ready. That took two more weeks. And you, it created animosity, and it creates animosity on campuses when you got core teachers teaching, resource people, or everybody's not teaching, let's just say. And usually, it would be for whatever reason, and it was a different reason from school to school. Middle school could be one reason, high school could be another. But if, if they're teaching English the first day of school, now it might take a day or so to get a resource thing worked out, but it should not take two weeks. So I've just thrown that out for whatever y'all doing with the scheduling, that that resource gets started when school's getting started also. It's close to that beginning.
Yes, and we are, like I said, working closely with Mary and her team to make sure that whether it's resource or core, doesn't matter, those classes are ready to go on day one, August twenty-ninth is our first day of instruction.
Got a question, Dr. May?
Mr. Mike, I just want, before he, are you finished with Mr. Craig? Are you about to go into this one?
I got letters next.
Yeah. Before you go into letters and relay, when you think about when you presented, tell us what you're gonna put, leave out. When you're doing letters and relay, how is it gonna, how are those K-5 teachers gonna be able to stomach all this? Are you gonna leave something out? Or you bringing, leaving both in? I know it states requiring us to do letters, I understand that. But are you still going to, are we still gonna require our teachers to do relay along with letters? How is that gonna work? How are they gonna be able to take off that? As you present this, talk to us about that.
Yes.
I think a couple of us may have a concern about overload.
Yes. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that. Dr. Wendy's gonna follow me with the.
Well, I just, we just wanna know about relay and letters. Just talk to us about that part. Maybe, we probably know a little bit about it, but tell us how it's gonna work.
Okay. All right, so if you look on the screen, those are our summer professional development. Because like Dr. May just said, we know that, you know, that, you know, everybody's busy, everybody has a lot going on. But we wanted to streamline and make sure that we're focused on what our initiatives are for the district. And these are our main focuses for the summer. Letters, leverage leadership, MTSS, and of course, our summer principals institute. Okay, next slide. And we'll start with letters. So Senate Bill three eighty-seven says that we shall incorporate a program that's gonna focus on pre-K through fifth grade, that's gonna help our students become skilled in all the reading foundation skills that they need in order to be successful. So working with the team and working with our counterpart as our consultant, Ms. Kathy Oliver, we met with the team probably about, I guess about three weeks now for the initial kickoff. And we know that principals, pre-K five teach, all of pre-K five teachers, which includes your EC resources, our academic coaches, and our lead teachers, all will participate in this initiative. It's, we already know that it's going to give us the opportunity to, to help our teachers. We know it's gonna be a lot of work. But like I told the team, it's not a race, it's all about setting the pace. So on April the twenty-sixth, when we meet with our pre-K five principals, the district staff, we will sit down as a group. It won't be myself, any of the supervisors, or any other departments setting the schedule. We will all be there to work out the schedule as a team. Okay? And that's gonna happen on April the twenty-sixth. That is the company that is, is providing the training force, Alexia Voyager, Sopris. We already have a team in the district. There are six of you, Wendy, is that correct? Six of you that are going through the initial training now so that we can make sure that we have identified a district team that can provide that additional support. And so we're, we, they are currently in, taking those courses now and, and doing a great job. So this is a two-year implementation plan. And that's why we want teachers and principals and academic coaches, leads to everybody realize this is not gonna happen in one semester. This is going to take two years. And it's gonna take, like I said, all of us working together, looking at our professional development days. Remember in that, in that master schedule where we had those, teachers are having planning time? We want to incorporate those days to help teachers so we don't have to use their Saturdays to hold training. We want to make sure that they can get this done during the regular school day. And, and looking at the, the feedback from all of the schools that want, that are in cohort one, it's gonna require about two hours per week, approximately two hours per week. Okay? So when we come together on April the twenty-sixth, we're all in this room here together, we have what we call a district supported, support planning document. That planning document will outline from the very first session up until the last session over two years. So that is gonna take, they said ninety minutes, but I think it's gonna take us longer to complete, to complete that because it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long process, gonna be a lot of discussion. You have some teachers who would want to do it on Saturdays, but like I said, teachers have a lot to do as it is when it comes to instruction. So we want to make sure that we provide those opportunities on our professional development days. As a matter of fact, I talked with Ms. Cindy Lewis today, looking at our testing calendar, looking at the academic calendar for the next school year and those days that we already have identified as PD days. We've already started looking at those days and how many hours we can get in during that time. But we do want teachers to realize, and administrators, that they are going to be compensated for all of their work that they're doing. This is not where we're gonna say you have to do this, you're not gonna be compensated. They're gonna be compensated. The team decided it's gonna be two thousand dollars, it's gonna be five hundred dollars per semester that they will receive. And talking with our, my counterparts in the region, I want to say there are two other districts that are providing two thousand, but a lot, a lot are paying five hundred or a thousand. So our team has really worked hard to get those funds. So thanks to Ms. Erica, the finance department, Title Two, everybody coming together and figuring out how we can make those payments for them. So as I said, we have Ms. Kathy Oliver, who serves as our regional consultant. I'm in constant contact with her. But for the implementation, I want to go through that with you. And it, you should have a slide in your notebook that looks like this. If you just, I just want to make sure you can see this, okay? So for the pre-K implementation, like I already said, the first meeting is on April the twenty-sixth, and that's where we set the dates for the next two years. I already gave you the background, who will be participating. And of course, Title One is gonna be providing the funding for all of our Title One pre-K teachers. The training will consist of online courses. There will also be application activities in the classroom that the teachers will be required to do. And all of this is outlined in the, with the Senate bill and the, and the plan. And of course, there will be live online professional development. As I stated, the training is gonna be somewhere between one thirty, one hundred thirty-seven and a half hours to one hundred sixty-eight hours over a two-year period. Talked about the teacher stipend, and then of course, the support. And that's why when you have an initiative like this that the state says and the general assembly says you have to implement, there has to be a lot of support, especially over a two-year timeframe. We can't just say on April the twenty-sixth, this is what you're gonna do, we'll see you in two years, and we hope you get it done. There's gonna be weekly checks, there's gonna be monthly checks, there's gonna be quarterly checks. We are gonna be constantly checking to make sure that we leave no teacher behind and no administrator behind. We are gonna be working with them very closely. Any questions so far? Yes, sir, Mr. Craig. Yes, sir.
Can you turn your microphone on, Craig?
I got it, I just got it. You know, what is gonna have to be done besides the state is requiring this? Or as a local unit here, are we gonna require something that's gonna take an hour a day? Or gonna take Saturdays? And you might don't have to answer it now, but just at some point tonight or in the next few meetings, let us know, you know, if it's relay. What else is it specifically? And when are those times gonna be? So we know as a board and the teachers and staff know what is gonna be expected of them.
Yes, sir.
At some point.
And like I said, we're gonna get to that. We're gonna get to that, Mr. Craig, yes, sir, absolutely. Yeah. We wanted to start with the summer planning, and then we're gonna go into the, what we have scheduled for the fall so far. Because we definitely do not want to overload. We're not gonna do that. Because like I said, this, this is gonna require a lot of time, and relay's gonna require a lot of time because it's all about how do we improve our literacy scores across the district? And with the science of reading, all of this is aligned. And, and they will be able to see those connections once they get into the letters portion.
And if all that is required and it's being done, I'm sorry.
Um, but Mr. Robert, what you're saying is, is there, there's gonna be some repercussions and consequences, correct?
If.
If, if nothing, you're saying that in this two years, there's gonna be repercussions and consequences.
And like I said, it, it's, like I said, it's not a race.
Right.
It's setting that pace to make sure that we keep everybody on track. Because we, currently, we have five hundred and seven, I think it's Mr. Davis, five hundred and seven teachers that we have identified, that we know that has to go through the, the training.
Right.
So that's a large group. But we're gonna make sure that we do everything within our power to, to keep them on track. So in two years, the state can't say that Robinson County, you did not fulfill the Senate Bill three eighty-seven requirements.
Father Williams got the floor.
Like I said, and, and I made sure I put the copy of the law because we're gonna make sure that every principal, well, the principals already have, but we're gonna make sure every teacher gets a copy of this. Give them the principals another copy because this cohort one just finished up their first year because it goes until twenty twenty-five. And I've already read all the feedback that, that, you know, from their surveys. You know, there's, there's a, like I said, there's a lot of concerns about the time. But with a district this size, we're gonna have to make sure that we are constantly doing those checkpoints to make sure that we're getting everything done according to the schedule.
Chairman. Dr. Robert, and I understand if, you know, the state's saying you gotta do this, that's fine. And the checkpoints and all that, that's fine. My concern is just that we don't have school X, so, okay, we're doing this workshop now and it's ten hours. And we got school B over here, we're gonna do this one and it's twenty hours. And then there's another issue, initiative that comes down from the central office that's gonna be going on on Saturday. You know, that's what I want to make sure that everybody is talking to everybody so we know what's going on. If it's coming down from the state or wherever, that everybody knows what is going on.
Exactly. And we've already decided, Mr. Craig, as a ticket, that we are not going to approve any professional development that is not aligned to the initiatives. And I don't see how they're gonna be able to do additional pre-K five schools when they have to accomplish all of this. This is, this is gonna be very time consuming. And I don't know how you're gonna get additional PD when you're required to do this.
Robert, when, does come up because it's constantly conversation about.
Robert, when it does come up because it's constantly conversation about relay, all of that, let's connect all of these dots. And Mr. Craig, to answer your question, absolutely, um, we'll have clearly defined initiative and the PD will be tied to those initiatives. So a principal making the decision to have this PD is not going to be possible because of our initiatives that we will agree on as a leadership group to include principals. But let's tie and connect all the dots, including, uh, Eureka Math, Relay, where we are with that. And then you'll see that there's not an overload. The truth is we're actually helping teachers that they don't have to spend all their time trying to design lessons and, and that. So let's connect all those dots.
So good evening Chairman Smith, Superintendent Williamson and the board. Thank you for letting me speak. And so what I want to say is leverage leadership is alive and well in the district. So what leverage leadership really is, is about working on, um, best practices in the school. So thinking about data-informed instruction, lesson planning, weekly data meetings, observing a classroom and giving teachers good feedback so they can continuously get better. So it's not about adding another layer for a teacher to do, just let's practice what you're doing and keep on getting better at it. So it's things a school should be doing every day on a regular basis, on a weekly basis. So this past year, when we think about last summer, 12 of our schools started as cohort one going through that training. They will actually finish that training May 3rd, um, where they'll have gone through all the professional development. In that process, what principals did is we went through different pieces of that. How do you have effective meetings with teachers so they can look at your data and make good, sound decisions about what should happen? Or how do you go into a classroom and look into the classroom and see what's going on and continuously help that teacher get better and better at what they're doing? And so that is what we did the entire year with our principals is spend time, we're learning those processes. And then Relay sent, um, two wonderful people that you'll hear from in a little while, Janine and Mary Ann that went and did visits at those schools with us together to observe classrooms in these practices being put in place to help us continuously grow in those areas. And I'll let them speak, um, in a little bit about that process.
And then when, let's, let's frame the conversation around. At the beginning of the year, DPI said, you know, you got to have something to turn this district. What they offered to us was the takeover model. And which has proven that it does not work. What happened is you dictate it to in terms of, of this, but never really get to the point to improve instruction. And then how do you sustain that? So, so as a superintendent, I refused to sign off on the takeover model. The language was the same. It didn't work. And so why would we agree to do that? That's how we landed on our knee was how do we first turn around? How do we change instructional practice? How do we design all those pieces? And then how do we sustain it? So that every three or four years, we're not have, so we opted and got DPI to agree. We're going to opt for a turnaround model, starting with principals as the instructional leaders. So part of the conversation tonight with the schedule is we need to create that capacity time within that instructional day for our employees to have time to collaborate and work together. But we're framing this around turnaround and let's connect all those dots. You know, with conversation around transformation, that's where we hit it. But we have to turn around first before we actually get to the transformation process. And this is a bellamala and you're going to see why. But we refuse to sign off on a takeover. That would not serve our needs, meet our purpose to do that. So that's, that's the backdrop of this conversation.
So, and as you've heard Dr. Williamson speak, we started with those 12 schools. We didn't want a takeover model. We want a turnaround. So making sure that principals were true instructional leaders in the building, because a lot of times we get stuck with managerial pieces. We know that. Um, and so what we just said is let's shift your attention to be more instructional. Let's think about those pieces and how do we help support you? And so what we had to do is really look at what our gaps are and what are things that are not going on in the buildings. And part of it was observations that really gave people quick feedback of things I can do week by week. So if I come into your classroom, observe, I'm going to be able to say, here's something I want you to work on that you're going to be able to achieve by next week to continuously get better. So trying to achieve some, um, filling those little gaps so that we can close the bigger gaps of the achievement that we see. By also having instructional coaches as part of this model, we have several people and now our assistant principals in part of this, um, structure. We have several people in the building that can help with that process. So going in, meeting with teachers, helping them plan, helping them think about how to continuously improve because we want that leadership to be built in that building to help one another. And so part of that was really understanding that we had to have strong relationships in the building. Everything had to be relevant. Everything had to be connected to what we're working on. If it's letters, if it's, um, what we'll talk about in a little bit, core curriculum, how do we increase the rigor of instruction that's going on in the classrooms? So that was even thinking about our pacing guides. Are they effective? Are schedules effective? If not, how do we use those pieces to help us be able to do those things we just talked about? So that we can be more effective in our schools to really meet the students' needs. Cause right now we weren't always, we were sort of hitting and missing certain students. If we look at our math and reading scores, we have certain dips. And so we had to think about, why is that happening? Is it because of the schedule and one student is getting 60 minutes of math here and 90 minutes of math there? Is it because of the curriculum and maybe I'm using this resource over there and another school is using something else? So we had to think about all those different pieces and those different gaps. And then how do you help the schools think about those processes? If we give them the tools to really support one another in looking at the data to make good informed decisions about what do I do? And what do I change in my lessons, in my observations, in my classroom as I go day to day? And so we knew it was going to take time, but if you, in a little bit, I'll let you hear how these 12 principals have really started to have a real shift, but also the entire group. Because just in March, we start our second cohort, which was all the rest of the schools. The principals and academic coaches, um, and lead teachers from all of our schools have joined and are now going through that same process. So that everybody in the district can start having a common language. If I go from building to building now, I hear a whole different language than I did before. Because now we're all speaking about the same thing, using the same terms, talking about what assessment should look like, uh, what data should look like? How do we observe what's going on in the classroom so that we can have a more effective impact in what's going on in the classroom?
And when, let me add, our original plan was over a three-year period of time, 11 schools per year. But the success and we disposed every principal and every school and it was clear, I don't want to wait. And so we made the decision to accelerate the process and put all the other schools in this coming year. But principals wanted that because visiting the schools, they saw the results, you've seen some of the numbers. And, and so that request from principals, I don't want to wait. I don't want my school to be behind. Can we? And so again, um, we doubled up and everyone's in next year. That's powerful. That's powerful.
And even for next year, it will, even though we have another year before APs will go through the training, we have already started the process so that they're exposed. And a lot of the principals are pulling them in to be part of that process. So they can really help support what's going on in schools to make it even go faster. And do you want me to show the videos so that first, before we go into the? So what I want to do is actually, um, let Jesse, Mary Ann and Janine kind of explain what has happened over the past year with implementation and how we're going to move forward. So if you're ready for the next one, let Jesse speak for us first.
Would you tell us this how, these individuals, what they do?
So, yes, I'm sorry. So Jesse is actually the person, he is from Relay. He's the person that helps develop the curriculum along with Paul Santoya, who is the, um, author of Leverage Leadership. Both of them have worked together to develop the curriculum or what we're learning. Like we said, these are not new practices, but these are things that are just effective practices. So he's actually the person that comes down, helps coordinate the professional development and does all of that. Janine and Mary Ann are the two coaches that coached the 12 schools, but also coached Drew and myself to help support the schools with the implementation throughout the process.
Hi, my name is Jesse Rector and I'm one of the vice provosts of leadership programs here at Relay Graduate School of Education. I wanted to share with you how excited I've been to work, uh, down in Robinson County with your leaders. It has been one of the most gratifying, uh, experiences in the last nine years of my career at Relay. Before I go into the specifics of works, we're, uh, the specifics of the work we're doing down in Robinson, I wanted to share with you a little bit about who Relay is and why we exist. Relay is kind of a funny name for a graduate school of education, but I want to share where the name comes from. It comes from this data. We know that if we took a third grader and we gave them a relay of three to five excellent teachers in a row, they would be performing at the 90th percentile. However, if we worked with that same child and that child had three to five low performing teachers, they would be only performing at the 37th percentile, a gap of 53 percentile points. Relay was born to change this. The goal of Relay is to help equip every single classroom, uh, with the strongest teacher possible to create that relay of excellent and effective teachers. With that said, we also know that a graduate school of education can only do but so much and that the best professional learning for teachers actually happens at the school site. With that in mind, we began to think about training leaders. And there's a wide body of data that suggests that leaders are a huge difference maker, um, for teachers and for student achievement. In fact, a strong leader who is focused on instruction can change the outcome of students for, uh, of up to seven months. Whereas a leader who is less proficient and less strong in instructional leadership can actually lower, uh, student achievement by two to seven months in the same time period. And we also know that leaders are saddled with a lot of other tasks beyond day-to-day instruction. In fact, nationally, um, school leaders are only spending about 6% of their time on instruction. At Relay, we hope to train leaders, school leaders to be instructional leaders, to make this 6%, if that's all they have, to be the most effective use of their time. And to hopefully help build system and structures at the district level to allow leaders to spend more time on day-to-day instruction than just that 6%. With that in mind, our theory of action is this, that if we provide a powerful learning experience for our leaders that allows them to increase their score, uh, skill and core practices, um, such as observation feedback or planning meetings or leading data meetings. And we work at the district level to improve the systems to allow those meetings to, uh, occur and to flourish. And therefore we use those skills more often that will have improved student outcomes. And that's really the goal, to make sure that all of our children perform at the highest levels possible, knowing and believing that every child can achieve, uh, success, uh, to the greatest level. And so that is the work that we do. And down in Robinson, we have focused on three main levers. These levers have been outlined in Paul Bammer's and Taylor's work, Leverage Leadership. Paul is in fact our content partner. He and I and a number of other folks have built this content to be focused on making sure that leaders can be focused on instruction. So what have we done down in Robinson? We've worked on observation feedback, knowing that if our leaders, um, can sit side by side with their teachers and think deeply about how we improve the instruct, uh, the instruction in the classroom, um, that our kids will benefit. But we don't just stop at coaching craft. We also focus deeply on, um, how we coach around planning. And what I mean by that is how do we set our teachers up to make sure that our students are doing the most rigorous tasks possible? And that the leaders allow the children to engage in productive struggle, knowing that the kids have to do the work to do the learning. And then finally, we focus deeply in on data. What does it look like, um, to understand deeply what our kids know and their strengths so that we can maximize them? And then narrowly focus on the gaps that they don't yet know and close those gaps with intentional reteach plan. And I want to step back and say that none of the work that we do is evaluative. The work that we do in Relay is actually to help the principal or the instructional leader become a coach. We know that leaders at some point will have to evaluate teachers. But we believe that by coaching teachers will raise the bar on those evaluations and we'll see more, uh, growth in teachers and increased teacher proficiency allows for increased student learning. So that's our theory of action. That's the work we've done in Robinson. But I also want to share a little bit about what we've experienced at Relay in Robinson. Having come into the, um, to the county, um, we learned, uh, we found a group of eager and excited principals. One of the things that we do is we practice all the time. So in our sessions, you can imagine that our leaders see some exemplars of research-based practices that have been proven effective across the country. But they don't just stop at looking at these examples, discussing what's effective. They actually go one step further and they try it on for size. So in any given session, you will see your leaders, um, sort of putting on the hat of implementer and trying on for size, the protocols that they've just learned. So, um, they're role-playing, um, they're acting out their, uh, culture routines and procedures. Um, and they're giving and getting feedback from each other. One of the most beautiful things that I've seen is a culture of practice evolve in Robinson County. Where when we first got there, it seemed a little awkward and a little funny because it is. And yet your leaders have embraced it and they realize that the real growth happens when they practice and when they give and they get feedback on how to be just a bit stronger in their work with teachers. Your leaders are optimistic. Their skill has developed. And what we've noticed is that they're talking about instruction in deep and nuanced ways. They're writing action steps for their teachers that are really, really clear so that teachers can follow them. They're also looking at data and are, uh, doing an amazing job of pinpointing, uh, very precise learning gaps. So that reteach planning can be efficient and effective and then gaps can close. The conversations that we're having around instruction in Robinson County are at incredibly high levels. The last thing that I want to share is that the district leadership has been incredible support, um, to your leaders. They are helping your leaders make ways for this work to happen. As I mentioned before, uh, many leaders don't get the opportunity or the luxury to spend most of their day on instructional leadership. They're saddled with so many other tasks. And what we've seen is that, uh, Dr. Williamson and Dr. Locklear, Dr. William, uh, Dr. Dorsey Carr and Dr. Davis, are really focused deeply on helping your principals think about implementation planning. How can we make sure that what we're learning in our Relay classroom is actually coming to life, uh, in our schools? And that's been the most gratifying. It's not been the training. It's been actually seeing, uh, through our coaches and through the conversations we've had, the work come to life. It has been an incredible privilege to work, uh, down in Robinson County. I'm excited that we'll get another opportunity to do it with a new cohort next year. And I deeply, deeply believe that you have the team down there that is going to change, uh, the outcomes for kids and therefore change their lives. If you ever have any questions, um, please follow up, um, Dr. Williamson, uh, Dr. Dorsey Carr, Dr. Davis, Dr. Locklear. I'll have my email. Come out to a session and see us in action. We are just so grateful to have the opportunity to work with y'all and, um, can't wait to get back down there, uh, to see the learning come to life. Take care, be well. And again, it's a privilege to work down there, uh, with you all.
My name is Janine Zeta and I've had the pleasure of working with the leaders of Robinson County since October 2022, just, uh, six short months of coaching. I specifically work with Jamal at Rent Springs High School, Melinda at Peterson Elementary and Amanda at St. Paul's Elementary. And I also get to work with Wendy at Central Office. It's truly amazing what we've accomplished in just those six short months. If you walk through the classrooms in these schools with like a before and after lens, you'll see that the change has really been transformative. We begin our journey at each school, looking at classroom instruction and action steps to improve the culture in the classrooms. And then also the rigor of the instructional delivery. And then this really gave us like a common language, um, with the way that we talked. And then from there, each leader has taken like their own unique pathway of learning. So for Jamal, we really drove into professional development and he stamped that with the see it, name it, do it model in his delivery. He's built in different engagement strategies into each of his professional development sessions so that his teachers can experience a new strategy and then they take it back to the classroom, um, and use it with their own students. Melinda has really focused on her weekly data meetings, um, and she's been doing those in math. She's really raised the bar about what teachers are putting in front of students and expecting of them, especially in regards to like the student work, the academic language. And even like how they show what they've learned. Melinda's become really strong at unpacking her standards. And now she's even pushing for that guided discourse as a reteach method at Peterson. Um, and then there's Amanda. Amanda has tackled, uh, a lessing, lesson plan internalization protocol that she's piloted, um, with a new ELA program at St. Paul's. So she's working on with her teachers to unpack the standard of focus, find the rigor in upcoming lessons, anticipate student misconceptions, and then she plans not only for the lesson in front of them, but also the arc of the module that they're working on. And then there's Wendy. What is it that Wendy and I don't do together? We explore curriculum, coaching, professional development. We look at every protocol that's ever existed. Sometimes it's just my job to bring Wendy back down because Dr. Williamson always has her working on something brand new. I mean, can we clone Wendy because there's just not enough of her to go around? So one of the best elements probably of our coaching this year has been our ability to like tailor them to the unique needs of each school and each school leader. But we're still able to keep that like common thread of all of those levers of leadership that Relay is invested in. And then there are a few like common teaching strategies that we, all of the leaders have worked on and embraced throughout the year. So one of those is aggressive monitoring. Also, the analyzing of student work. So really having leaders think about like what are students producing as evidence of what's happening in the classroom? And then the engagement strategies. And then just to think about how classrooms have changed from like my first visit in November to this last visit in March, it's really amazing. So when I think about the three schools now, I think about like the schools where the students have now voice and they share their thinking. Students are taking ownership of how the lesson moves forward rather than the teacher having that ownership. It's the students. I think of classrooms where there's student discussion and dialogue and it shows learning and understanding. And I hear teachers asking like a provocative probing question and then students do the rest of the work. When I think about these schools now, I see a classroom filled with student work that shows students solving problems in different ways and students in third grade writing in a way that maybe before we wouldn't see until a middle school. I see teachers creating exemplars of the student work and raising the bar of the expectations for what students are going to produce because teachers know and expect students to do more. I mean, really what I see is a mindset shift to what our students can and will do. And we believe it because we've set the platform for that to happen. It's humbling, the changes that have happened and we owe that to your leaders, right? It's been an honor and a privilege to work with such loving leaders and such humble leaders and such open leaders to the coaching. So thank you for this opportunity. I'll close with one of my favorite quotes from Peloton instructor, Just Sims. You can be a work in progress and a masterpiece at the same time. And so I feel this exemplifies Robinson County at this very moment. It's been great in year one and I can't wait to see what year two holds.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Stinson calling in from Washington DC. I have had the privilege of working with three fabulous school leaders and the ever committed Andrew Davis last fall. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to share what we've been working on this year and the success that we've experienced. Overall, we've been building the instructional toolkit of our school leaders, the levers of leadership outlined by the Relay Graduate School of Education. By building the instructional toolkit and strengthening the lens of our leaders, we bring equity to our schools by offering the highest quality instruction. Let me give you a few examples of what we've been working on. Primarily, we've worked on data-driven instruction through the common language of weekly data meetings, observation and feedback through the creation of action steps for each of the teachers and action steps overall for the school. And we've done these during our in-person instructional walkthroughs at the school as well as during our remote coaching sessions each week. Coaching each of the individual leaders has led to results. Let me start with St. Paul's High School. Working with Mr. Suggs and his team, we have seen student engagement increase through the discourse created by the teachers and a response to student learning and misconceptions with the implementation of academic monitoring. When you go into classrooms, you'll see the academic monitoring chart on the wall, letting students know the expectation and to remind teachers that we will be looking at student work every time they're engaging in independent practice. In our last visit, Mr. Reed, the math teacher, provided immediate feedback to students and gathered a small group to reteach a concept that they missed during the lesson, making immediate improvement in student learning. While those students were working with Mr. Reed, other students were able to continue on the lesson. Mr. Reed circulated the classroom. He marked every student paper and collected that student data so that he could pull the small group and knew exactly what he needed to do the reteach on. During our instructional walk, Principal Suggs gave real-time feedback to the science teacher to implement a turn and talk, which increased the student engagement and the discourse in the classroom. And that coaching happened right there on the spot in the classroom. These are changes that are happening right now. At Purnell Sweat, both Mr. Clyde and Ms. Olivia are working hand-in-hand to implement weekly data meetings, creating no-show charts based on the standard and ensuring that the student work is aligned to the rigor of the standard and that teachers are planning at that level. Mr. Clyde is also offering real-time feedback to teachers and even modeled a reteach lesson during the math class. He provided a wonderful example of a teacher model. Students were learning as well as the teacher, side by side. In addition, teachers are creating their exemplars for their lessons in advance so they know what they need to monitor while checking students' work during the lesson and collecting data based on their exemplar and providing that in-the-moment feedback to students. Finally, let me share the work at St. Paul's Middle School. God bless Mr. Sinclair, who has only been in his position for nine weeks, but is already increasing his toolkit with the basics of weekly data meetings, analyzing student work and giving teachers feedback. He has supported all of his teachers, but specifically his new fifth-grade math teachers, digging into lesson plans, looking at the data and student work while using the common language of no-show charts, teacher exemplars and academic monitoring. In fact, teachers have been reorganizing their classrooms to allow for them to make their laps and check in with each student, marking every student's paper during a lesson to make those critical teaching decisions. Overall, we see teachers as diagnosticians. They're examining student work during the lesson and providing on-the-spot reteaching, increasing student engagement with discourse and ensuring that there is always independent student work aligned to the rigor of the standard. As we continue coaching and coaching our teachers, we increase the quality of instruction in each and every classroom and we will see those results in student outcomes. Some of my most fun has been working with Mr. Drew from Central Office. Mr. Drew brings passion to the work and ensures that the student experience is high-quality in each of his schools. We love the phrase that he has coined, "If you see four, do more", meaning if a teacher sees four more students with a misunderstanding, the teacher needs to stop and do something. They can model the lesson over again to make sure that all the students are getting it or perhaps do a guided discourse, making sure that every student is mastering the concept during that lesson, making these critical moves to ensure that student misconceptions are addressed in the moment. No need to take exit slips home or grade papers at home. You may do that, but watching teachers address student learning in the moment in the classroom has been so rewarding because we know that students are able to get re-engaged in the lesson in that moment. He's also created professional acumen amongst his leaders. They are collaborating, they're sharing best practices across schools, all in a common language that they've learned. It is this level of collegiality and learning communities that I believe will raise the bar in each and every one of our schools. I'm so proud of the work and the willingness of each school leader, their vulnerability. Despite the challenges that we faced, they've kept their foot on the gas pedal to improve teacher practice, create meaningful PLCs and improve student outcomes. I am honored and humbled to be part of the Robinson transformation. Thank you.
Is in obviously math and reading. And so to close that gap, we need to add the rigor. And Wendy, talk about how we're going to do that with the math and the... And then we can have any questions on what's been said.
So what we looked at as we've spoken about, there's been tremendous gaps in math and how do we close those? But also provide the resources that teachers need so that they can easily plan a lesson instead of having to pull from different places. We know how hard a curriculum team has worked on the pacing guide, but teachers still have to take each resource and then design that lesson originally or put the planning together. What we want people to do is focus on the design and really looking at the data. So Eureka Squared allows us, if you go to the next slide, allows us to think really about what are the needs of our students and having lessons that are already written out, where now all I have to do is think about what are the needs of my particular students? So how do I adjust that lesson based on those particular needs? So it's developed a lot around conceptual understanding. So thinking about how does all the math fit together and how does everything build on each other? So what they call that is mathematics as a story. So each grade level builds on each other like it's a story. Each concept they teach builds on each other as a story. So they're mixing the pieces together. If you go to the next slide. Eureka Squared is, as you'll see, 95% aligned with our standards. And that's always a concern when you look at any program, how is it aligned with what we do now? And so this is a big piece because that means we don't have to fill in a lot of gaps. They don't have to go to a bunch of different resources. And where we see across the district, I may choose this resource from Tools for Teachers. I may pull something from Teachers Pay Teachers, which we hope they're not doing. But we do that because we just are trying to pull in all these different things to help ensure that we're meeting the needs of the students, but also the rigor of the standard. And so what this allows, based on the alignment and based on the tools I'll share in just a second, it allows students and teachers to have everything there that actually meets the standard so they don't have to think about how do I pull all these pieces together? So everything's in one place. So if you go to the next slide, I know Dr. Manuel...
Wendy, so the truth is, we have actually created the opportunity for more instructional time, more one-on-one reteach time, because again, it's designed for them.
Right. So it's designed for them and it's also designed with models in mind. So if you think about it, a lot of our classrooms have gotten away from those hands-on pieces so that our students really understand those concepts. So thinking of a ruler or thinking of bar graphs or tape diagrams so the kids can touch it and feel it before they get into the abstract math because it actually provides all those tools for kids to touch and feel, manipulate first before they get into the other pieces. So what it does is first go, for example, if they're working on money, first they're going to actually have money to touch and move around to think about, but then they get into representing it with just coins, right? Or just marks. And so then you actually get into the real math of adding and doing those procedures. So it's really getting back to understanding where it's coming from, not just looking at the numbers and memorizing something. And so what it does is build a lot of different pieces in it to make sure that we actually have that rigor needed. We need to make sure students are really addressing and getting to that standard at the level that they need to. So part of it is of course that conceptual understanding, understanding where the math come from, but also fluency. So fluency, what we're talking about is fluency multiplication, fluency in addition. So they're doing practice so that they know those basic facts so quickly that they can really spend more time on going down and looking at those word problems. And so the other piece that Eureka Math has provide is accessibility. So thinking of how do you have time for differentiation? What do I think about? How do I support my EC students? So with universal design, it puts those pieces in there to help teachers know what are some things I can do. They also thought about readability. So thinking of signs of reading with letters, they've thought about the science of reading and thought about how do I help in K2 make the text more accessible? So if I look at a worksheet traditionally in those grade levels or word problem, there may be words a child can't read. What they have thought about is how can I make it and change it so it's decodable based on those skills, implementing those science of reading skills, thinking of phonics and all those. The other piece it does is also address social-emotional learning, giving opportunity for students to voice what their thoughts are and really think about what's going on. As far as teachability, what they're really saying is the resources are right there at their hand. They don't have to go dig. They have the hands-on materials, they have the lesson plan written. There's also a PowerPoint, so they don't have to create that. So everything's there for them so they can spend more time thinking about what does instruction look like in my classroom instead of spending an hour maybe writing a lesson for that day. And then of course, engagement, offering a number of opportunities for students to be engaged in the math in different ways. So it might be through online, but it's also going to be a lot of hands-on and that's where a lot of our students have not had that opportunity over the last few years, really spend more time with the hands-on math and the application of the math. Any questions about the math before I go to the reading?
Any questions?
I noticed that the Senate bill mentioned a lot about phonics. Is phonics built into this math also?
So yes, so in K2, what they were saying is they took the work and made it easier for students to read. So thinking about the phonics skills at that grade level made it more accessible so a teacher wouldn't have to read some of the things to the child. So they've taken that time to build that into their program.
Good.
Reading? So if we think about reading and we look at our K2 scores, we notice that there's a lot of gaps in phonics and phonemic awareness. We've seen that over the last couple of years. And so what we thought about is how do we look at another way of addressing it? And so L-Education is a reading program that is K8 that focuses on content-based literacy, which means you have real hands-on books that you use, books that you read all the time or check out in the library, real literature. And then also for K2, you focus on that skill-based module, which is really the science of reading. So it's all only focused on for a whole hour of phonics, phonemic awareness and those skills. Can you go to the next slide? So one reason we looked at this is that it's heavily recommended from ed reports. If you know anything about ed reports, they review programs nationally to look at what really meets the needs of our students across the nation, not just in North Carolina. And so what this program showed, K8, that it has heavy indication of alignment to the needs of our students when we think about rigor, coherence and those pieces. Can you go to the next slide? One more, I'm sorry. So what you'll see is books that we are, all grew up on or books that our students have seen when they check out a library are really heavy emphasis in this program. So really getting texts back in hand. If you know, over the last couple of years, a lot of our text has been online. This is really having text in hand for them to read and have some good literature to really dig into and have that rigor that we need for our students. It embeds science and social studies because we know they need that background, but it also expands and helps them with student achievement and supports their learning. You go a little further? And so there's a different component and when we look at K2, 3, 5 and 6, 8. So K2 is two hours of reading, just like any 3, K5 class, but one hour specifically just on phonics and phonemic awareness, those basic skills that every child needs to be successful in decoding text so they can comprehend. Then there's another hour that is just based on content literacy, which just means they focus on the comprehension piece, reading texts, applying those skills that they're learning. It also has opportunities during that skill-based learning or the phonics and phonemic awareness for a lot of differentiation. So it's a lot of small group time to really focus on our individual students' needs. 3, 5 is also two hours. 3, 5 is also two hours, but it's one hour that is focused on really spending a lot of time of reading literature together. So then the second hour is where we start differentiating and doing those small groups. So this is where more time is spent on writing, grammar, those basic skills that you have to put together when you're really digging deep into the literature. And then 6, 8 is one hour long. And it also focuses heavily on literature, but integrating everything into that one piece. And so the next two slides just show the topics that are addressed. But what you'll see is a lot of those topics deal with science and social studies text, and they use multiple pieces of text for students to really get a grasp of those concepts. And what I'm going to say is we have a couple of schools that have really started doing the old version of this program that was free in this one and tried it in their school this past year. And we just spent, I think it was almost three weeks ago, Dr. Williamson, Dr. Robert, where we were in one of the schools and observed the third grade classes. And I was going to show the videos, but you can't hear them well enough. The students were able to do so much more with that text. What you saw is students sitting around on the floor together, engaging in the text. And we even had a child that had come in late that we all assumed really didn't have any idea what was going on. He was, as Dr. Williamson found out later, and we all found out later, was an EC student. And he proved us all wrong because he had had so much integration, understanding what was going on. He was the first one to answer and knew, really had a really in-depth answer in what was going on. It was just amazing to see the vocabulary change in those students because they were so interested in the topic and what was going on. And teachers have really gotten really excited there because now they see those students really growing and developing their vocabulary skills, developing their comprehension skills. Even the non-readers are starting to pick up because they're getting so excited with everything that they're doing in the classroom. So any questions about? But the pieces that we put together will help us. So if you think about Relay, Relay is asking teachers to really develop the lessons. How do you do that? How do principals support them? What we're looking at is how do these two tools allow teachers to spend more time in instruction by having the tools right there for them? So all they have to do now is think about their individual students and the data represented in the classrooms.
So I hope that answered the question in terms of, no, we're not overloading teachers. We're asking them to do something different. And what's different is practice, practice, practice for you as the instructor and as your students. But we're not overloaded. It is aligned. There's a common language. It's going to get results, going to get results.
Ms. Cindy, I noticed in the media center, they've already started changing the language in the media center. Is that part of the differentiated teaching that's taking place? I like it. The kids loved it as it was coming in, so I recognize it.
Any other questions or comment? Thank you.
Summer school.
Summer school update, Melissa Thompson. Robert, who's doing?
Yeah, as you can see, we finally got our numbers in today because today is the last day for summer school applications. Today we extended five weeks. And you see there that there are approximately 4,500, 4,600 application. Last year for summer school, we had 2,600, 7,000. So we hope all those kids could show up because we want to make sure any needs that they have that we can meet. So you looked at the different programs there, we got by, you know, Reach to Achieve, Reach to Achieve Plus, some Bridge, Career Accelerator. So you can see the numbers. Any questions on the summer programs? We're just so pleased that so many parents, they've been calling wanting to know, can I get my baby in summer school? We're like, yes, it's not too late. So we've been getting a lot of phone calls, so.
As far as the personnel piece, we've had about 1,100 employees to apply to work in the summer school program. Right now, I have been sorting it by program, sorting it by grade level, sorting it by school. There's a lot of sorting taking place right now. And that's how we will get to the selection of the employees at each school. We're just getting these numbers in. So as far as how many teachers we need for each grade level, each program, that is soon to come now that we have the numbers here. Any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
And we do start summer school. And we do start with summer school on June 13th, so.
Okay.
Shining Star Bobby update and other updates.
Mr. Bobby and I were tag teaming this one, but I was over at Shiny Stars yesterday and been over there just about every week for the last few weeks. Dr. Williamson, our, the last time we went, they were just getting started with the construction. And if you go to that, of course, please, you know that, oh, what happened? Okay, we don't know what happened. But anyway, we have pictured, now I want to say there are your books. The progress that they're making over there, Mr. Ernie, his team, Mr. Bobby's leadership, they are doing a phenomenal job. We had open house yesterday at the Shiny Stars there in Lumberton. And so I did sneak in there to see exactly what they've done since the last time I was there. And they are making tremendous progress. So we're hoping by August that we'll at least have some of those offices. Mr. Bobby, I think you want to give an update on that, but they are really doing a great job getting it all ready for us.
And to follow up with Dr. LaClair's comments, we just closed the bid on the final, on the final construction piece there. We're in the process of finding that, finalizing that paperwork and getting it over to Ms. Erica. So that's moving along quite, quite well.
You say the final bid.
Yes, some of the work was done in-house.
I know Mr. Ernie didn't do a lot of it, but the final bid, y'all going to tell us who's got it? Or would that be presented Tuesday or whenever?
I can have that information for you on Tuesday because Mr. Robbie just shared he closed the bids last week.
Oh yeah, I think we need to know who it is. Okay. Dr. Emmanuel.
Are we ready to move to that letter or that, the licensing, Mr. Robert, developmental day services?
Yes, oh yeah, the summer program.
No, there's a letter, oh, section 2,900, no.
Yeah, that's the next thing, summer program. I know that question came up about pre-K. So I did work with Mrs. Vito, Jamie Lowery, Ms. Jennifer Hanna, trying to research because we were concerned about the licensing and making sure, you know, we didn't lose any funding. So we were grateful to talk with our consultant. I think I had two conversations with her just to make sure that we were following the guidelines. And so we will not lose any funding. Our license will not be entered with. And if we do not have summer programs there this summer.
So what is the answer?
The answer is we do not have to have summer.
All right, can I ask a question? Why would you not want to have programs for children? What would be the reason you wouldn't want to have programs for children, even though you're not going to lose your license? I'm just asking for an explanation.
Shiny Stars here in Lumberton, you know, we're trying to finish that remodeling. So there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of construction going on there this summer.
But that's at another side, isn't it? Yeah, but you're doing it to another building.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the construction going on at the Lumberton site, that was one reason.
But I guess what I'm trying to get, you're not doing the construction at that specific site. You're doing it in another building, aren't you?
It's all within that same complex. And we're adding new classrooms. If you go in there, you'll see all the plastic is up right there at the office area.
That's the reason you didn't have a pro, I guess, my clarification and one parent, that's the reason you're not having any programs this summer in that building that Shiny Stars is renovation.
Well, that was one of the reasons we looked at, one of the obstacles. We knew because trying to get everything finished this summer, so we'll be ready to go in August. We knew it'd be hard to have summer school there and try to get the building ready for August.
All right, would you, in the future, if you don't mind, or somebody in administration, make that clear to parents due to construction? We will not have any summer programs at this site. And not just that it's a decision of some administrator. Because that, I think everywhere we can have a program, especially with children with those needs, we need to have a program. We shouldn't be cutting programs for children with special needs ever. And I know that that, you said construction, and I buy what you say. And I know we're not, according to this memo here, we're not going to lose our license or anything.
Or funding.
But we should never, ever, I think, in my opinion, ever not have a program for a child with special needs during the summer. That's just my opinion, and I think it's just not valid. This is valid with construction. I buy that, okay? But from now on, I think it should come up to the superintendent before it happens that, look, Mr. Superintendent, we're not going to have a program this summer. And let him justify why there's not a program, not after the fact that he finds out after the fact that there's not a program. Because it's just not right when it comes to children, especially with special needs. Thank you.
So very quickly, bring you up to speed on our additional classroom spaces at St. Paul's High and Purnell Sweat High. Because we were using ester funds for this, we kind of hit the reset button, if we want to use that term, to kind of not necessarily start the process all over again. But to ensure that we're following guidelines with the way the feds are requiring us to spend the money. So we met with the engineers about two or three weeks ago, Jerome, and kind of just said, we're going to continue with this project, but from here forward, we need to make sure that we're following the federal guidelines. So at both of these sites, we've asked the engineer to design a building that is going to be 100 by 150 at both of these sites.
It's 100 by 175. I've talked to the engineer.
Okay.
And make sure that he's clear on that.
Okay. At both sites, yes.
Same. That would give the Purnell site a little bit more space. But at St. Paul's, because of the locker rooms, we've got to have it. But both will be 100 by 175.
And I'll follow back up with the engineer to ensure that that happens. Also, we are in a sense of kind of where COVID is on the very back burner and let's hope that it goes away. But we never know what is around the corner for us. But we are ready. We do have ample masks still in supply if we have to go that route. We still also have ample cleaning supplies on hand and in stock. And we're still requiring our schools to sanitize daily with our backpack sprays to ensure that the buildings are clean on a daily basis. This is always keep, this appears to be pushed back, but we got confirmation that the 15 additional activity buses that we ordered through our ester funds will be with us at the 1st of May. They are in line and they should be here in the next two to three weeks. So we should have, that's another checkmark of an activity we had budgeted for ester that will be out of the way.
Randy.
Mr. Bobby, can you bring us an update Tuesday on where we're at on air purifiers for the schools? If you want, I can tell you now. Bring it on. We're done. We're done. That's what I wanted to hear. So every school. Every classroom, every space in the public schools of Robinson County has an air purifier. Say that again, Mr. Bobby. Every classroom, every office, every media center, every GM, every space in the public schools of Robinson County has an air purifier. Thank you.
Yeah, Bobby.
And that is all that I have.
Got the buses?
Yes, sir. The buses will be here on 1st of May, the additional activity buses.
Members down in the Southside Ashville Elementary Transition Plan that we have.
Yes, members, thank you so much for your letter of support. As you are aware, State Board of Education did approve the transition plan on yesterday that Southside will transition back to the public schools of Robinson County effective July 1 this year. Thank you for your support. And we made it clear, it is our intent not to close that building. And help me, Jennifer, we're trying to add pre-K classrooms back to that site.
Yes, absolutely. We are going to add. Right now, we have the plans of adding one, but we already inspected. And we have the plans of adding a second one at a later time. So yes, we will return pre-K to Southside Ashville.
And then the last piece is policy 9010. What the policy says in terms of site selection, that the superintendent through this policy is authorized to do any environmental work and to do any board and show if, see if the property will perk. I'll get it from Mr. Grady, if that's an extension of our contract that we already have. But it's our intent to have all that information available to you. We've been told that we should have notification of the need-based grant, that award by the week of the 25th. We hope that would be the case. As soon as we get that notification in, and we'll ask for a finance and construction meeting so that we can have a conversation about the site. But we'll have all the other work done at that point in time. Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Thank you for your time. We appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you. And again, those items that will move up to Tuesday night for action. But thank you for your time. I want to say thank you to the staff. And we're going to see a difference in outcomes, in outcomes. You will. Great. Thank you. Hope everybody have a wonderful weekend. Thanks.
Thank everyone for their participation. And I thank you for the board members that showed up and administrator staff outstanding job. A lot of good things happening in the public schools of Robinson County. We got good leadership. We got good administrators. And I'm optimistic about where we're headed. You have your board packet, you have your board packet at your desk for Tuesday night.